All right, I'd like to call the village council meeting, uh, regular meeting for October 13th, 2020. I show it's two, I mean, 6:31 PM for the village hall. I see we have a full forum, including myself, Roan, and Robert, uh, Markalise, Councilman Markalise, Roan as well. Um, before we go any further, I'd like to turn over, um, everything to Mayor Proten Van de Berg, if that's okay. It's very little easy to organize from here.
Okay, so do we need a motion for that? So can I get a motion to allow Mayor Proten Van de Berg to run the meeting?
Some ease?
Further discussion?
All's in favor.
He's doing it now. Aye.
And a motion. I want to know a motion.
Do that, Jamie.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, um, allow Councilor Markalise, uh, Roan and Mayor Joe Polino Roan as well.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Fabulous. Uh, next up, adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, subtractions, changes? I do, but I'll let everybody else go first. Or do you want me to go first?
You got the list.
Okay, I'll go first. So under new business, we're gonna have a new number two. And it is going to be discussion and consideration of Tolomor Phase One repairs.
And there we'll have paperwork for that when we get to it.
That's our new business, Kim?
New business. Yep.
Everything moves down from there?
Yep.
Yep. And then, a... Rohit, are you gonna talk about your strategic committee?
Uh, yes.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll talk about that there. Um, under number four in new business, instead of, actually, so it'll be... Sorry, it'll be number five. The new number five currently says discussion and consideration, adoption of the Village Marvin 2020 Land Use Plan. We need to change that because we actually have to call for a public hearing and do it that way. So we're gonna change that to call for public hearing. We'll advertise for it, and then we'll have a public hearing at the November meeting.
Where's that at?
It's the new number five.
Okay.
What was the question that you're asking?
If you're gonna talk about the, your meeting from the strategic heritage district strategic plan?
Or no, actually, I mean...
Are you gonna talk about it in your...
You can do it in planner's report.
Yeah, I can do it in planner's report. It's not on here, but...
Well, I figure, I was, that's, okay.
Do you do planner's report? No, not that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Planner's report, you'll update us on that?
Yeah.
Great, great. Um, and then, under planner's report, we need to table roundabout lighting update to the work session, to the October 29th work session.
Under the planner's report?
Correct. We're, under B, reports and updates, planner's report, letter B.
Yep.
Table that to the October 29th work session. And that are, that's all the changes I have. Anybody else have any changes? Any additional changes?
The only thing I have is I just have a couple of quick questions for Andy and, uh, open topics regarding Woma, so next week, I'll have that. So if we can add that, I just have a real quick question.
Okay. All right. So open topics, we'll do Woma update or Woma question?
Yeah, just, just Woma, yeah.
Okay.
Update meetings, schedule.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Not for me, thank you.
Okay. Bob, anything for you?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Jamie, Andy?
Good.
Okay. So I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
Salute.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up is the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this republic, with liberty and justice for all. All right.
Still hearing that.
Next up, public comment. Do we have any public comments?
The two gentlemen that are here are here each for their conditional use of...
Fabulous.
No comments.
No comments?
Signed up unless someone on, on virtual wants to speak.
Anybody on virtual, public comment? Nope. All right. Next up is report to the state's administrator's report.
I have one small report, just wanted to pass out, um, the HOA sign for the street lanes that were replaced now. Canterfield Creek, Heritage Joe, Weddington Chase are all participating this year. And it was a slight overage in what we anticipated the signs to cost due to the length of the signs and adding in the block numbers. So we're gonna absorb that cost, um, because that's not something that we had incurred, um, to the HOAs. It was a total of $832,000. We've already got the money budgeted. It's there. We will implement these signs in the fall.
$832,000?
Thirty-two, no.
Christine, I might have a struggle when you say that.
Eight hundred and thirty-two dollars.
All right. So the only ones that said yes were Canterfield Creek Heritage Jokes and Weddington Chase.
That's it?
That's correct. So we will ask again next year.
Okay. Cool. All right.
But they should be done sometime in the fall.
Okay.
That's all I have for admin reports.
Okay. Uh, next up is planner's report. Rohit?
That's why we need to speak up a little bit.
Oh, sorry. Next up is planner's report. Rohit?
It's just really people at the end of the table need to speak up.
Okay. Not me.
Not you.
It is not you, Kim.
Okay. Just checking.
Okay. Um, so first thing is the village hall DFI contract update. Last meeting, we were talking about having DFI also do a contract for the village hall, like, partnership that we're intending to, uh, you know, potentially have with Mr. Venture, but they said they don't do that service directly, like, as in, like, we pay them to do the, the contract, but they will sit at the table with us while we have potentially our attorney or someone else do the contract, and they will, um, do that for free as a service of the school of government, um, you know, giving us, uh, ideas of things to include in that contract that would benefit us, uh, just kind of be like an extra, um, hand at the table. So, um, so there's no contract, no fee, uh, just, uh, general consensus to, um, you know, to have them join us, uh, for that village hall, uh, public private partnership conversation, uh, basically. Christine, any, anything else out?
Yeah, so we had initially said that, um, the village attorney was gonna do this work. Can you hear me, Mayor? We had initially said that the village attorney was gonna do this work, and we had thought that DFI would be a, a better party, um, because they have a lot more experience with this. And so that coming out, we're gonna work together with our village attorney and DFI to come up with some type of agreement. DFI will review it with their attorneys as well, and, um, we'll get a really good collaborative agreement set for, if this is the route that we go.
And just to clarify, that's just for the village hall contract. The, uh, economic feasibility study is on the consent agenda for, um, for that project.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm fine with that. I kind of figured Chaplin would be doing the physical, the actual contract. I was just hoping to have somebody else with the, kind of the terms and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. DFI would do that.
Okay, cool.
I guess, could I, before we move on, can I have a consensus to, uh, have them involved in that contract project?
Yeah. I mean, I, yeah. I think we, I think that's what we wanted to begin with.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thumbs up from you two?
Yeah. Okay, great. Um, they're really excited to be involved too, so that's awesome. So if there's no more questions, next one is Marvin Gardens Updates. Um, so you, council members all know, but this was public, uh, Publix is opening October 21st at 7:00 AM. Um, that is next Wednesday. Uh, we're also doing the ribbon cutting. That's not really open to the public, uh, for, uh, the council members to come, uh, the previous day and meet the, the Publix team, uh, that made this possible. Um, you know, I hear a lot of, uh, positive, um, energy about Publix being open. Uh, it's been a long time coming, so this is, uh, it's a gr, I think it's a great asset for the community. And, uh, yep, next Wednesday, 7:00 AM, first customer there gets to cut a ribbon also.
Do we have any, do we have any issues, Chaplin, with this not being open to the public? Since we're all having public meetings, but Publix doesn't want people there?
You can just do a notice of, um...
I know we did that.
It's already issued.
It's a notice of quorum, and as long as y'all aren't conducting the business, you don't have to keep minutes. Y'all are there for the social interaction and the...
Right.
Yeah, we just can't discuss any business while we're there.
Okay.
But good job, also going in and getting that notice of potential quorum.
Right. So it's, yeah, that's the one.
Now, just to confirm, the ribbon, I think is going to be on the 20th Tuesday, not two?
Yeah, one to two, that's right.
Okay.
For the council members and mayor only, not, uh, public.
Okay.
And it involves the tours? So expect to spend about an hour there or so?
Yeah, yeah. It should, it should, you should spend about a whole hour there. Uh, don't know. But, uh, masks are required and, uh, social distancing also.
Okay. Perfect.
So ribbon cutting.
Ribbon cutting.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks for keeping us in the loop on that, Rohit.
Yeah, no problem.
At one, you got it, Jamie?
Okay, um, if there's no more questions, the next one, annexation, uh, Phase One update. There's a couple of things going on. We did, uh, complete the letter. Um, we still need a little bit of, uh, staff work to, uh, you know, make it mailers, print them all out. Um, there's a budget, uh, um, request further up in the agenda, but, uh, so yeah, so mailing, we have, get in contact with the HOAs, but we're, uh, we're making progress on that as well. And, uh, I did, I did get an email from, I did get an email from someone who lives in Walden Pond. He thought he was moving into Marvin, found out he's not in Marvin, but realized that that is adjacent to our park, which means it could be in our Phase One push if, um, you guys wanted it to be. Um, it's the neighborhood that's just right next to on either side of, of the park. Yeah. Um, and since it's contiguous, it could be in our favor if you guys are okay with adding that to the map.
Sure, sure.
That cool?
Yep.
Sure. Been trying to get them to annex for years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, okay, well, that's, it's with that. Um, and the last thing that's not in the, the memo is the Marvin Heritage District Committee. Um, we met. Uh, the first meeting was mostly introductory in nature, um, but it was great. Uh, there was a, a fair bit of discussion. I anticipate there's gonna be a lot more discussion starting next meeting. Um, and uh, the, uh, I mean, the committee members are all great. I think, uh, they're gonna play a large part in how this district is shaped. And, uh, you know, I just have really, um, high expectations for this committee. Really excited.
So the first meeting, technically...
Yeah, the first, first meeting, um, the October 1st did not have a quorum. Um, and so we postponed it to the next Thursday, which is October 8th. Um, and there was another, I guess, two members that didn't show up to either of the meetings.
Then we have nine?
Yeah, we have nine.
And who didn't show up?
Michael Lovell and Will Owens.
Okay. Um, do we know they weren't gonna show up?
Michael called me ahead of time.
Okay. I mean, it, like, for me, if you can't show up for these meetings, then we can get, we have other...
I know. He did, he did call me, and he said that he had, uh, a, a business event and wasn't sure if it was gonna, with the COVID, was gonna move into dinner or not with the, his client, so he, he couldn't attend it. But he said it, he'd rather just, if you're gonna, we're gonna do anything to act on it, it, you know, I think it was most introductory is what he was told, most introductory stuff, and he kind of knows that. I don't think there's a chair being nominated, correct?
No, there's no chair. I'll be kind of, uh, as often saying, a parliamentarian, which means I'm not a voting member, but I'll be kind of leading us through the agenda in each of these meetings.
Now, Rohit, let me ask the question. Um, you know, one of the constituents asked me this question, but put public listening in on this. Um, three questions. Is Emma Lane going to participate at every meeting? Is she going to kind of direct the meeting?
Yes, so she's gonna be, uh, kind of like a subject matter expert, having, uh, had experience in downtown development. Um, so yeah, she will be at every meeting, and she'll be helping me create the agenda packets that will have a lot of examples for the committee members to look at.
Okay. Second question, um, there seem to be some, uh, I'm not gonna say fusion, but more of a trying to be understanding of where the, the Heritage District, the Strategic Committee starts and the Planning Board ends, or vice versa. So maybe for the public, can you just, can you tell everybody what is at this meeting, how? Would, how that, how that's gonna be situated as, as district is getting developed?
Uh, yeah, that's also a great question. So I think at the last meeting, there was a, like, a little bit of a consensus that the Planning Board wouldn't have direct oversight of the committee, but, um, statutorily, the Planning Board has to provide their recommendations on all planning and zoning matters. So you, you take a look at what the committees would be responsible for. It's, it's a, it's a lot more than zoning. Streetscape's not zoning, uh, business recruitment's not zoning, but the Planning Board can, at, at their meeting, the Planning Board can, uh, reflect on what the committee, uh, worked on and provide their opinion to the planning, uh, to the council. When it's time for the council to adopt the, uh, strategic plan, they'll have had Planning Board's input on the matters related to planning and zoning. That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah. Now, the third question, you know, as I was sitting in and listening, um, and some other citizens were listening, um, they asked, okay, so they saw the map, which is kind of old news. I mean, we've shown that same map of the Heritage District and, you know, what was in yellow and all of the overlays. And the question was asked, okay, so here's the district, here, here's what committee's going to be dealing with. Um, does that, does the committee, the Strategic Committee determine what the yellow's going to be, for example? Or is it up to the property owners to approach us? So in other words, is there a, uh, blanket commercial? Like, like, take, um, Scottless Property. Uh, i- is that particular piece of property going to be zoned or could be zoned? I mean, we haven't voted on anything, but, but is that gonna be a generalized commercial piece of property less so? And then, who determines what's on it? In other words, is it something the Strategic Committee would recommend? Is it something the Planning Board would recommend? Or is it all up to the property owner? And property owner says, this is not what I would like, then what is going to continue?
It's up to the property owner, it's up to, whoever their tenants are.
Um...
So the strategic planning is like an advisory board to the advisory?
Um, yeah, so that's, there's, there's a multi-layered question here. Um, so the map that we're talking about shows the subzones. The strategic plan will be the foundation of what we allow the property owners to build in terms of where they can put commercial, what types of uses they'll be allowed, and, uh, et cetera. So, but then, when it comes down, let's say we have a list of 10 uses, the, the, um, property owner will then be able to choose tenants that fit any of those 10 uses. Um, but the Strategic Plan Committee still will create this plan and submit it. The Planning Board will review it and provide their recommendations. It's up to the council in, in the end to adopt it. So, um, I, I guess I try to stay away from using the word determine when it comes to any of the advisory boards or committees, because the council is the only board that can determine or finalize anything in the end. Does that make sense? Chaplin, you agree with that?
Yes. They're advisory boards. They make recommendations. They can study certain issues, because they can focus on them, but then everything ultimately is gonna come to this board for the decision.
Right.
So the focus is really going to be on, it's gonna, all of this is gonna hinge on the property owner. I mean, the property owner will just come to all the committees that, you know, and say, this is my idea of what I would like.
No.
No, not quite, no. I mean, there are some property owners that are members of the committee, and that's why, you know, it's a good distribution of people. The property owners will represent all the other property owners, and the residents of Marvin will represent all the other residents of Marvin. Um, but it is the committee, you know, it, just, I mean, just imagine if this board had to work out all the little details of the committee, we would, you know, be spending an extra four hours with just, you know, the council. That's why we have, uh, committees, uh, so that they work out the details little by little every month, and then the Planning Board reviews it, and then the council adopts it. Of course, the council will review all those details, but the council is not going to, um, you know, workshop all those details. That's what the committee will do.
But, but the committee's also not gonna say, okay, a coffee shop's gonna go there, a sandwich shop's gonna go there.
Right.
It, it's up to the individual property owners.
Yeah. That's what I was, that's what I was leading to, is that it's ultimately the property owner that decides the development they're gonna have in a place that it could be possible to develop.
Right, right, right. The strategic plan, sorry, go ahead.
Are we gonna, are we gonna open these meetings that, like, say, a property owner is not owning committee, however, wants to kind of appeal to the committee to consider their property for X, Y, Z, is that gonna be entertained in these meetings?
Right, there's a public comment period in these committee meetings.
So let, let me interject real fast, if, if I may. The, the Strategic Planning Board is essentially an advisory board to an existing advisory board. So they, they are advising the advisory board how they feel public input sessions should take place. Um, we will have, let me write that down. No, you just said advisory, just say, uh, it works. But Planning Board, um, so they will basically advise the Planning Board through public input based on property owners, citizens in general, that can come to some of these meetings and give their input based on those, those level of, uh, meetings. From there, the Planning Board will come up with some recommendations for council to consider in terms of allowable uses, zoning, that sort of thing. From that standpoint, they will recommend that to council. Council can review it and say yes or no. Um, and then from there, there's actually another layer that the Planning Board has, which is called a design review board, and that's more in terms of aesthetics. So they, they will come up with those aesthetic standards for anything in that jurisdiction, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yes.
Through this whole process, we will have several public input sessions, and then when you actually go through the rezoning, there's a, a public hearing, a slew of public hearings that have to be had where individual property owners can come and voice their opinions.
Yeah. All right, thank you for that, because that was another question that comes, who's going to be responsible for the design, like, you know, with the approval of the historic nature of the design of the, of whatever the aesthetics are gonna be. So, thank you.
Wow. Okay, um, I don't have anything else on that. Do you?
Okay. I did.
Yeah.
Or, I was interrupted. Um, in, in terms of people, uh, attending the meeting, if, if it becomes a problem, a committee member attending meetings and they're not there over, and I don't think you need to have an attendance policy, but if somebody's not there, they're not calling, they're not letting some, us know that they're not gonna be there, then, then we need to have a conversation, or you need to call them and find out if they're really serious about being on here and helping us. And if not, then we can remove them and we'll put somebody else on there.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, it's my opinion on that.
They, they will, we are preparing a rule of decision that you guys will get to look at, um, and that will have an attendance policy in it.
Okay. I mean, I don't care if you guys have one or not, but if people aren't calling and saying why they're not gonna be there, and it's the first meeting, first two meetings, that's not a good first impression. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
Not on that. This, I mean, it's the first meeting, so...
Okay. It's exciting.
There'll be a lot more, uh, in-depth updates later.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep, no, thank you. Okay.
That's it for my planner's report.
Great. Next up is road report, Christina.
Yes, I have a lot. Um, okay, so first and foremost, I'm gonna go through this list. Wyndham Hall actually approached us at the last couple of meetings and requested us to take over their roads. Um, we looked at the index as far as the percentage, and the direction at the time was for me to go back and entertain an encroachment agreement to obtain four-way stops. Subsequently, I've had a meeting with DOT. They do not allow it. So an encroachment agreement is not an option. So at this point, um, Wyndham would like for us to re-entertain the idea of taking over their roads.
Can you index the subdivisions based on the overall percentage and find out where we are? Like, they have, they do have a problem with people cutting through, shockingly enough. It, it's a safety issue. We need to find a way to help this neighborhood, these two neighborhoods out, and, and figure out what we can do. So however, we need to figure this out, and I'm not saying that we just take over, arbitrarily take over their roads. That's not what I'm saying. But we need to figure out a, a way to help them. They, they're willing to, to help and do whatever they need to do, but they're not getting any traction, and it's, it's dangerous in their neighborhood.
Okay. So what I'll do is I will look at their neighborhood in comparison to all the others that are in the state system. We'll index them based on the percentage, and we'll have a discussion at the work session.
Yeah, that'd be good. Is that good with everybody? Good?
Yep. Next item is no left turn. Uh, we've been entertaining this. DOT is actually going through the state system right now and getting this changed into their system. We will see an ordinance at one of the next meetings that prohibits that left turn. So you'll see some more activity on this in the next couple of months.
Ooh, that's exciting. Okay.
That's the left turn from Newtown onto Marvin.
From Newtown, from South Carolina, left onto Marvin.
Yeah.
So the next item is the Newtown petition and going ahead and accepting or petitioning for DOT to relinquish those roads. Wanted to mention that the rating based on AMT's assessment was a 68.4. NC DOT is not willing to do, yeah, NC DOT's rating was an 80 based on their last assessment.
Two years ago, though.
Yeah, that's right.
So a lot, a lot of trucks have run this road two years.
So AMT's rating was 68. Um, DOT is not willing to do anything right now. Not that they're not willing to, they just don't have the funds to do anything. Um, I do wanna mention that we would have to, number one, annex some of the, the road. I know we've had some emails exchanged about that that I haven't really fully looked into. I do wanna mention, though, that part of what you were talking about, NC DOT is not willing to relinquish the rights between the two roundabouts. So that strip, they're not willing to, to let that go. So...
That strip?
Yeah.
So there's...
There's no point in...
There's no point then going through it, yeah, if they're not gonna let it?
So...
Wait, did they say why?
The strip of land? Like, where the, where the median is?
Yes. Yeah, they want control. It's, it's about control between the two of them. He, and that's not, uh, that's not a definite, but he did say that, that's, the chances of us getting that are probably low.
That doesn't make any sense why they would wanna continue to control that one little if, if we got the whole thing.
Wait, from roundabout to roundabout or just the median?
Just, just in between the two roundabouts.
The roundabouts.
Not just the median, the, the right, the rounds.
Oh, so they want us to take it over and buy it and pay for it from, from...
And the reason being...
The furthest roundabout to, to the state line, but now they're saying no, so it's this roundabout to the state line?
Yes, yeah. So it, well, it would be wherever the, the limit is there.
So that one?
So they...
It's so weird.
Right there, yeah.
Yeah, so they don't, they don't want us to put monuments into the roundabouts. That's what it's about.
It's about having control over one, over, over a percentage of the, the lands, too. So they still have...
Well, then that takes out 500 feet that we have to take over, so like, that's good.
Yeah, they wanna control the roundabouts.
There has to be, there, there, there's something they're not telling us. They don't, they don't say, no, we, we wanna keep that.
Well, we can make the petition to be there and there, and then we can address it when it comes, if that's what y'all want to do.
Well, I mean, I would need, I would need a, just, a definitive explanation as to...
Why?
I mean...
Because we want it.
We're gonna set up a speed trap there.
Because we want it. Um, does, when AMT...
How long are we supposed to be doing?
When AMT went out to, to look at the road and tell us what the rating is, did they happen to tell us what it would cost to get it up to snuff?
No, he didn't. I can ask him to do that.
That'd be good.
And what, and, yeah, I, I'd like to kind of know what were the deficiencies to make it a 68?
Okay.
Well, there's, I can tell you.
I, I know.
It's fissured. Yeah, I mean, there's, it's very fissured. It's, it's had a lot of pressure on it, and it's, it's degrading just from the heavy truck traffic.
So we get it fixed, get it, get the trucks off?
I have a feeling it's gonna be a resurfacing thing, just from my experience with this... I have a feeling it's gonna be a resurfacing thing, just from my experience with this stuff.
I'll get some information from AMT, I'll also coordinate back with DOT as to why, we'll see what they say. But do y'all want us to move forward with preparing the petition?
Yeah.
I would, yeah.
Okay. I'll stop, keep it, keep it moving.
Okay, um, any other questions, comments on that?
No.
Cause I have one really big, exciting piece of news. Everybody, everybody ready?
I know what it is.
So.
Do we need a drum roll?
I don't.
So, um, one of the.
Wait, 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 put, 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 put everybody back up, so we can see everybody's face. I don't know what it is, but look. It might be that.
Wait, Joe back up.
Yeah, Joe, you're back on, pay attention.
So one of the last items that y'all had asked me to, to look into at one of the previous meetings was the roundabout cost, um, and what it would take to potentially look at financing that, so we can get it done sooner than later. And so we went back and looked, the roundabout cost was estimated at one point six. In order for us to finance that, we would have to put some collateral down. So we would have to put one of our existing properties, whether it be the park, whether it be our village hall property, um.
Ball?
We would have, we would have to put some of that down.
He doesn't think that's funny.
What, what do you, what's that?
Hang on.
We're gonna put you up as collateral to pay for the roundabout.
Yeah, I, okay, I'll do it.
John got it, John was like, oh, that's funny.
The only two.
I'm gonna write it down, I'm still at one point six million.
The only two issues that we have there is that, uh, acquisition has not been completed. NC DOT was, NC DOT was still working on that when we kinda stopped progression there.
Not we, they.
Uh, they, I'm sorry. So in addition to getting financing or obtaining some type of reimbursement, we would have to work through CRTPO to set some amount and some type of terms on the reimbursement. So it's, um, it looks like it might be a little bit more complicated than what we initially thought. However, we just got an email today, um, that the, um, NC DOT actually gave some funding to CRTPO to advance suspended projects, and their, um, TCC met, I'm sorry, their committee met yesterday and recommended approval for a roundabout to move up on the project. And so, that being said, TCC will meet in November to approve the list, and if it happens, that roundabout project will begin shortly thereafter. So we could potentially be looking at twenty twenty-one again.
Woo!
Wow, no kidding.
Yeah.
That's.
They're just doing waves.
Well, you're not getting any money from me.
So we do have a voting member on that board, which is our mayor, and so we need to make sure he's at that meeting so that we have that vote.
Wait, 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 to clarify, I'm the voting member for the TCC.
Oh, okay.
And Joe is the mayor for the board, so, uh, that, the TCC vote will be first week of November, and the board vote will be like second or third week of November. Um, and that's when they'll vote on which project should be unsuspended, so.
Well, there we go.
So you're gonna vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Joe, you're gonna vote yes.
Would you do?
Your CRTPO meeting.
The November CRTPO board meeting.
Make sure you're there.
So, let, let me ask real quick, well, the people that are voting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how many people are voting, and how many of those, I meant this kind of a broader question. How many people are voting? How many of those people do you know, and how can we start to grease that skid now as opposed to getting into the meeting and just, just going fly, fly by night, hey, oh, we're voting on this, and can we do it?
Yeah, there are about thirty voting members, I think.
And who's the most prominent of the thirty?
Um, of those thirty, I think Charlotte has about five to ten.
Are there other projects that are going to shine brighter than ours?
Well, there, I think there is somewhere around five to ten. Do you have the email? Yeah, there is about, let's see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven projects that made the unsuspended list. Uh, Matthews, Matthews, Davidson, Cornelius, Weddington, Marvin, Corn, Cornelius. Um, so none of those were in Charlotte, but, um, I don't really know how to answer your question beyond that.
Let me ask this question, is there a way that, or do you think it would benefit us to get a list of the members and maybe have us submit some type of letter that says, we need this project, please?
Um, I mean, yeah, I, I, I know where to get all the TCC members right now, um, but I think, uh, Joe would have to, uh, see his, uh, correspondence to see all of the board members.
So if council.
We usually have the support of, obviously, county when it comes to projects and, and anyone who's representing, it all depends if they show up there, but, um, but the majority of the members, if I'm not mistaken, it is like, it's like a little over fifty percent is CRTPO, but you're talking a different group?
Um, yeah, yeah, so I'm on a board called the TCC, which stands for Technical Coordinating Committee, and that is a voting, uh, recommendation board, uh, consisting of basically some planners, some engineers, um, one from each of the municipalities that are in CRTPO. Um, so that's why I'm a voting member on that board, and you're the voting member on the, uh, the, the board, the real board.
So.
Yeah, and I haven't, I haven't looked at Wyndham's November meeting yet, but I know we have a WUMA meeting coming up, which will have all of the, uh, Union County, uh, police, you know, Wesley Chapel will be there that we can talk to as well as Weddington, and it, we just gotta encourage them to go to the meeting. They don't normally show up at the meeting either.
Well, I don't, what I don't want is, I don't want Davidson and Matthews and Matthews and, and Hummer.
Well, they're also on the unsuspended list, so if the vote is yes, all of those projects and ours get unsuspended.
Okay.
So it's not just one out of ninety?
No, no, it's not just one, yeah. Changes that they vote yes for.
Yes, yeah.
It's a group, it's a group that the TCC recommends.
Well, and then, and being a.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to be proactive and not assume that we're all just going in there waiting on one vote where we can go ahead and begin the process of, hey, we, you know.
If you're looking for people to drum up support, I think Bjorn Hansen is probably, he's a very, uh, prominent member in the CRTPO organization, so maybe reaching out, maybe Joe, maybe you wanna reach out to him, um, just to see, you know, what are the chances of, you know, what are other, other people thinking, and what are the chances of this being a yes vote?
Who is that? You're remoffled.
Bjorn.
Bjorn, Bjorn Hansen, you know him.
Oh, Bjorn, Bjorn, yeah.
He's pretty prominent on the CRTPO, you know, organization.
What's the date of the meeting?
Um.
It's in November?
Yeah, all I know is the TCC, I don't know when the actual board meets, but, uh, Joe and whoever is the alternate, I think Jamie, you're the alternate.
Jamie is the alternate, yeah.
So you guys should know more than me when the board meets, but the TCC meets on the first Thursday, so.
But there is a vote for sure on, on November, right?
Uh, that's what.
Per that email.
Yeah, per the email.
And it looks like it's all seven projects to get unsuspended, so we just need to make sure that.
Yeah, it's just that there are about, I don't know, sixty other projects that didn't make the cut, so hopefully no one has any hard feelings, but there was a thoroughly, uh.
Yeah.
Um, there's a thoroughly deliberated index that ranked the projects on a lot of factors, and ours was one of them that made the top cut to be unsuspended.
That's good.
So hopefully that's.
Did you say you have them meeting, uh, when is that meeting? Is it, sure, I can show, I'm not looking at my, your, uh.
Um, I, I like, I don't have the access to when the board meeting is, but the TCC meeting is November, it's gonna be November fifth. And, I mean, the board meeting's like, something like, it's like the, the third Tuesday of, or third Wednesday of the month or something like that, I don't remember, it's somewhere around that region.
Yeah, I don't see it, I don't see it online, but somehow I might have a lot of appointments with computers in my account, but I'll figure it out.
CRTPO is November eighteenth.
Gotcha.
Third Wednesday of every month.
Nailed it.
Google it.
And it's at six, usually five, there's a five o'clock meeting and six o'clock.
Don't be late, Joe.
Be early, Joe, it's four o'clock.
It's funny because they, somehow a lot of my appointments got wiped out, and that was one of them. It would've been on there if they sent me a, a notice.
All right, we'll put it on there now.
So at the November, at the November meeting, pending that we've received notification, we'll let you know what's going on if it's not November, December, and we'll let you know with an email if it's.
What time does that mean, the CRTPO meeting?
It doesn't, didn't say.
Usually six o'clock uptown, Jamie.
Four o'clock, Jamie, four to eight.
Okay. Hey, Joe, if you don't mind, I'll go with you, or, and obviously, if you can't go, please let me know.
Yeah, 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 we'll, we'll make sure someone is there, you are, I.
We're both.
Right.
So pending no further questions or comments, that's all I have about roads. Very good.
Well, real quick, um, and I'm glad this was brought up because, uh, we were talking about doing that only enough work, and I hope we don't have to go down that road because, and we can talk about this when we get to the WUMA thing, but we learned some interesting things about, um, municipalities that went forward and had like an IOU with the state, and we're about to go into legal matters with them because the state is not, basically, you know, what, coming up with their, what, what they said they would do as far as, you know, we have to do this on our own and finance it, and then the whole waiting for, uh, uh, the, the state to come back and pay us. Um, I guess that was done in another area, it did not go well.
Which, which municipality is that, Joe?
Dom.
I talked, I talked to Melanie today, she said that absolutely did not happen.
That's not what we were.
This is coming from a councilman, ask Andy.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I talked to their legal counsel today, and she said that they are nowhere near suing anybody. They did not enter the legal agreement with, uh, DOT, it was the developer that did.
Oh.
So, she is, she is, she is not, she is not preparing any legal, uh, action against DOT.
Somebody was missing calls, that's what was said at the WUMA meeting last night.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, I, I called legal counsel for Stallings.
It could've been the, it could've been the councilman basically talking to us ahead of time, saying they're about to tell the legal to move forward with doing something. I don't know the details.
But, but Stallings did not enter into the agreement with DOT, the developer did, that did the roundabout.
Okay.
So I think the council member may not.
Okay, thanks for checking into that.
You got it. Any else for roads? Hey, deputies report, did Tommy leave?
No, but I told him, like, y'all had questions, he would come out.
Anybody got any questions?
Who, who, who?
Did we, did we find the white Jeep?
No.
Really?
The white Jeep is still missing.
That was, that was aggressive, too, man. What'd they do, back up the tow truck and just took it?
Nope, very easy.
What happened? I didn't hear about a Jeep.
Um, I'll go through the list, uh, of probably calls that we've had. We've had a total of twenty-four nine-one-one hangup calls. Um, one accident, that was a personal injury, it was a Providence Road, Newtown Road. We had two accidents, uh, Newtown and Providence that were property damaged, uh, three hit and runs, and the biggest thing that we've had this month has been vehicle breaking. People are leaving their vehicles unlocked, people are coming through, and they are checking unlocked doors and taking whatever they can take. Uh, one vehicle that was taken, they actually left the key fob in the vehicle. That's why it was taken.
Sorry, it's not funny, it's terrible.
And we're still looking for it, so it's actually a, uh, white Jeep Liberty. Uh, we did a hundred, or a hundred and three traffic stops, two hundred and thirty-five preventative patrols, and we had one suspicious vehicle that we did not locate.
Okay.
Can I ask why they had a, right at two thirty when buses are coming through, they had probably six Union County officers stopping people right on Joe's car and, uh, just checking licenses?
Uh, that was to make sure that everybody's got valid license, cause I have to have mine, so everybody else should have theirs also.
And I was the first one who went through.
Did you have it on you?
Yeah.
Okay, checking.
He did, we didn't take him with the same.
Okay, that's good, that's fine, all right.
I assume they were checking tags, too, because.
Yes.
They weren't walking around about.
Yeah, but the main purpose was the validity of licenses.
But the crazy thing is, there's an extension on tags, isn't there with COVID?
There is.
Okay.
You got a five-month extension, but also, um, when your tag's out, your ins, your, your, uh, inspection's out, and there's no extension on the expect, uh, inspection.
That's kind of a.
They catch twenty-two.
They catch twenty-two there.
They, uh, I, I don't know why they did it, that's, that's the state.
All right.
They don't get you with the left, they're gonna get you with the right.
And good luck getting your, uh, license, too, cause the appointments are forty-five days out now. I just got mine renewed, I drove all the way to Clyde to get my license renewed.
You can actually do it online.
Now with CDL you can't.
Oh.
So.
All right, any other questions for Tommy? Nope, Tommy, thank you very much.
Yes.
We appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next up, uh, planning board chair, John Jones. Hey, John.
Hello. Can, make sure you can hear me, can you?
We can hear you.
Very good. Well, you know, first and foremost, I'd like to say that the Empower Planning Board is extremely happy to have, uh, given the completed land use plan to the council for consideration. Uh, I think that all of us are very, very pleased with the product, and I hope that you are, too. Um, because we've got a lot of hours invested in it, I think it's a, you know, very good plan. So, you know, it's just that, you know, we're happy to see it in your hands. And then secondly, you know, as a joint member of the planning board and the Strategic Planning Committee, um, you know, I was in on the, I, I was at a panel, wouldn't make that first, uh, council meeting, but I was online with the second one, and as, as Rovit said, there's a lot of conversation about how everybody's gonna work together, and, you know, been thinking about it, and, and succinctly, maybe, you know, picking up on what Rovit had said, maybe, you know, the planning board's, uh, responsibility are sort of restrict, I won't say restricted, but focused on codes, codes and ordinances and how that has to play within the, uh, the historic, and Marvin, this historic district. And then, you know, the other stuff, which I know's gonna take an awful lot of time, you know, will be picked up by the Strategic Committee, and, and, you know, this is just my thought, and I think that all of the, the members are still trying to, to put their arms around how it's gonna work, and, you know, we look to, to the council for any of your thoughts or clarifications on that. I think it's been discussed already, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, we're, we're thinking along those lines as well, so. Uh, you know, cause we, none of us want to duplicate efforts, uh, because it's an awful lot of work, and that's the one thing we don't wanna do, is have to do the exact same thing, you know, in two different places. Uh, you know, that's my thought on, you know, and that's, I'm even discussing with any, any other of the planning board or the Strategic Committee members, that's just my take on it. And other than that, that's all I've got to, to say this evening, unless you have questions for me.
I'm good. Anybody have any questions for Mr. James? Nope, okay, John, thank you so much, we appreciate you.
Thanks for all the hard work, John, and the entire committee.
Thank you, John.
All right, next up is Park Trucking Greenway Chair Report, John Berisich. I don't think John, I know John's not here, I don't think he's on the phone, um.
I mean, I, I guess you wanna speak to the roundabout planning, cause.
We all know about that, we're good.
Big update.
Yeah, I think we're good.
All right.
All right, so next up is the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bueller. All right, next up is public hearings. Uh, number one, uh, is to discuss, I guess, what, what are we doing here?
To open.
Yeah, they're done to open public hearings.
Open public.
Yeah.
All right, so we need, I need a motion to open the public hearing for CUP application number two zero dash one two five one zero, which is three thousand Rocky Hollow Drive, pool in a rear yard that abuts the side yard.
So moved.
There you go. Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so we need to swear in.
Yeah, this is, uh, do we have any public comments? Do you know?
No public comments. None have submitted to me.
Okay.
Nobody else is here except for the applicants, um.
The contractor's on, on hold.
Oh, contractors, call-in user? Okay, but I suppose they don't have a public comment to make, right? Yeah, you guys can speak during the, uh, the discussion.
It should still, y'all should really hear that during, this is the public hearing. You just speak now, so, yeah, that way it's, it's cleaner.
Do we need to swear in?
All right, then, yes, yes, you need to, uh, swear in the applicant, um, who's here, Dr. Mabil Ahmad, and the, uh, All right, then. Yes, yes. You need to swear in the applicant, who's here, Dr. Mabil Ahmad, and the contractor.
And you.
Uh, yes, and myself.
Okay, all right.
Okay, who am I swearing to first?
Um, I'll go first.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay? All right, good. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay? And call-in user two, okay?
All right. Call-in user two, what's your name?
They look like they're muted.
They are.
Yeah.
What's your contractor's name?
Forrest Alderman.
Forrest, are you on the phone? If you are, can you unmute yourself?
He says he's muted.
Does he know how to unmute?
Yeah, he says he's not muted. I don't want, is it okay if I just call him?
Yes, yes, that's fine. That's fine.
If we might not. It looks like we got everybody muted. Is there a way that we can unmute everybody?
Yeah, but I don't wanna unmute this person in case they're not the contractor.
Okay, no, we couldn't hear you, but you're on speakerphone now on my cell phone.
All right, so just for him in.
Yeah, no problem. Thanks. This happens, so it's okay.
So, we're gonna swear him in.
Yes. Forrest, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I'm gonna swear you in.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay?
All right. Thank you. Okay. So, okay, Rohit, you wanna go?
Yes. Give me one second to pull everything up. Oh, no, I can't walk this off. All right. So, the applicant has submitted a pool that would be in the rear yard that abuts the side yard. The property is a little bit different, because it's kind of kind of adjacent to the, what you think is kind of like the front yard of the person behind him, but it's, on paper, it's the side yard. So, this is the applicant's house, and they're proposing the pool. They're proposing the pool to go over here. This is the side yard neighbor, and just like many of the others before, the minimum setback is 20, but they provided 62 feet from the pool to the property line. And they have also proposed plenty of screening that, according to this diagram, would be very sufficient. In any case, I would recommend approval of this conditional use permit. That's all I have to say about it.
You have the one condition with the...
Uh, yes, yes.
As I may add, in the May, we're meeting in exceeding all state and local codes and county codes. The footprint of the pool just completely in the backyard as designated by every HOA. Because unfortunately, the setup for that development allows someone to view it, but the distance and the screening that we're providing, if you're any view, there would be no way to secure the pool. It would be like having a couple acres just because the whole situation in the neighborhood is thick and possibly thin, but in case that only thing will be able to do it. And the neighbors don't object either.
So, have you talked to the neighbors and, you know, got like direct statement that they don't object?
Yeah, we talked.
Direct statement from the level, Dr. Ahmad, you can test this, he's spoken with the level.
Yeah. So, we spoke with the neighbors in the back as well as on the side, and we have their consent.
Okay.
We also had the fence, you know, from the last meeting, they had their request to confirmation that we're gonna have a fence, so we have that.
Right. That is shown here. Whoops, my drawing's terrible. It's shown here on the updated landscape plan that they did intend to build a fence that looks like it's gonna be around the property line centrally. So, planning board conditions met. Other ordinances are far exceed, and so I would recommend approval.
There was no conditions?
Uh, the condition was that they added a fence to the landscaping plan, which they did, and submitted a new landscaping plan. For, I suppose, if it was, it might have been hard to hear the contractor in the microphone. What they said was that the plan they submitted exceeds all state and local ordinances. I can agree that it does exceed our ordinances in terms of distance and screening.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant, or Rohit, or the contractor?
I do not. I do not.
Nope, okay. So, we need to go through each finding of fact individually?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
You mean the public comment, Forrest?
Yeah.
Well, that's in the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. Close the public hearing. And then, do you need another motion to open the discussion, or no?
They can just move on with discussion and call for the findings if they don't have a lot of discussion.
All right. Do we have any discussion?
Nope.
Nope, okay. So, we need to go through each of these individually?
Couldn't you state them all and then make one motion?
You can. You can do that. And then, if it passes or if it fails, there'll be another one to grant or deny.
Okay.
And the one thing we have to do because of COVID is with the grant or deny, we wanna make it effective unless we hear a a comment contrary to the way the board voted, just out of the whole language.
All right. So, I'm gonna go, okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve CUP application number 20-12510, contingent on no public comments being received within 24 hours for the end of the public hearing, and if any public comments are received by the clerk, then we will retake the vote at the work session on October 29th, 2020.
If they're contrary.
If they are contrary to...
To the decision.
Decision tonight.
We don't want a neighbor to agree with it.
Right, okay. And then, slow it down. Okay.
Wait, don't we have to go through the findings of fact?
Hold on, I'm getting ready to, I'm getting ready to. So, in that motion, we're going to have the following findings of fact, in the affirmative?
Yep.
Yep. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property, or the use is a public necessity. The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with this chapter and the village land use plan. And additional review criteria, I say, did, no, let me do that one?
That, just the additional, you can just say that the...
Oh, the conditions placed by...
Oh, there are no additional review criteria?
No, that the...
That they, the condition that they, this is a little bit weird.
Okay.
That they kind, that they add the fence in accordance with the plan.
They added the fence in accordance to the plan?
That's it.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'll catch that on the read.
Yeah.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes. Congratulations on your pool. Enjoy. Let us know when it's open. We'll come over for a party. All right. Next up, we're gonna open the public hearing for CUP. I need a motion to open the public hearing for CUP application number 20-12513, 3405 Bannion Way, pool in a rear yard that abuts the side yard.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, we need to swear in.
Here we go again.
Do I need to be sworn in again?
Yes, because it's a separate one.
All right.
So, we're swearing in Rohit.
Massive day shopping right now.
I feel like this happened.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I swear.
Okay.
All right. Anybody else?
Um, applicant, contractor is here, and the applicant is on...
All right, well, yeah, let's go ahead and swear him in, since he's here, and then we'll come back over and swear in the applicant.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay.
All right.
One more.
Stop sharing for a second.
There you go.
Do a lot of swearing to that.
Hello.
Okay, Andy, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony that you are about to give during this hearing is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So, Rohit, go.
All right. So, to be honest, conditional use permit like this was the reason why last year I wanted to propose like a minimum setback for which conditional use permits are not required, even if it's adjacent to a side yard. This pool is gonna be located about 240 feet from the neighbor. Providence Road Estates, you know, properties are several acres large. And even then, the neighbor's house is another several hundred feet away from that property line. But the ordinance is not ambiguous. Any pool located in a rear yard that abuts the side yard needs to go through the conditional use process, and so we're looking at this, this is the address here, and the pool. The pool, let me draw it in blue. The pool would be located somewhere here. Um...
It's a big pool.
Ah, it's a small drawing. That's not that big.
It's a crater.
But then we do, we do see that...
We've never, it's gotta be a funny.
The pool to the property line's about 240 feet. It will be in that area where the pool is going. It will be fenced and screened, you know, in accordance with our ordinances, and yes, that's all I have to say about it. I would also recommend approval of this conditional use permit. And so, is there anything contractor or applicant wants to add to that?
No, I'm pretty sure it's a solid term.
Andy, can you...
Thank you all for the clarification.
Thank you. Can you even see your neighbor? Like, can you even, nah, okay. This doesn't look like it. All right.
Yeah, still, our screening requires evergreens specifically, even if you have, you know, a mile of...
Evergreens.
Yeah, even if you have a mile of woods between you and your neighbor, you still have to plant evergreens.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah.
Because you wanna make sure we're in harmony.
Yes, we are. All in harmony. All right. Joe, Bob, you guys have any questions?
Not for me.
I don't have any.
All right. We get a motion to close the public hearing.
Public comment.
Oh, yeah. Kind of get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay. So, Bob and Joe don't have any questions. Jamie, Andy? Nope, okay. All right. So, we're going to, I'm gonna make a motion to approve CUP application number 20-12513, contingent on no public comments being received within 24 hours from the end of the public hearing. And if any public comments are received by the clerk, then the retake, then we will retake the vote at the October 29th, 2020 work session if it is in contrary to the decision. And to have the following findings of fact in the affirmative. The use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. The use meets all required conditions and specifications. The use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property, or the use is in public necessity. The location and character of the use, if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and will be in general conformity with this chapter and the village land use plan. Stop. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Andy, let us know when it's done. We'll come over for a party.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
I'm gonna break my pen. Next up is Village Hall, Christina.
So, a couple of things. We are going to have an architect, an architect meeting this week on October 15th. The mayor and Mayor Proton will be at this meeting. Will be here at Village Hall. We'll start coming up with some preliminary design for what, what is it, council's looking for as far as architecture is concerned, and we'll come back and start getting some things a little bud. Second thing is I have a revised timeline I wanted to pass out. Basically, in a nutshell, we're still looking at the same groundbreaking, however, some details changed based on the fact that we have to go to actual construction bid before we can do financing. So, pass that out. If anyone has any questions, you can still roughly the same groundbreaking. And then last, Fentra has contacted us earlier this week about an update. We need to have a special meeting. So, I'm gonna ask Austin to send an email out to you guys tomorrow for some dates and times for the week of October 26th. And...
All next week I'm out of town, but after that I'll be fine.
So, we can, October 26th?
I should be back. Yeah, I'm gone 19 through 23rd.
So, if y'all can just reply back to him as soon as you can, we'll get a special meeting set for that meeting.
Okay.
With several lists.
And let's try to do it before the work session, so then we'll talk about it. Okay.
Don't worry, the boss is gone. Just me, I'm working.
And that's all I have. Okay. That's all I have for Village Hall. All you have for Village Hall. Okay, great. Thank you so much, Christina. Next up, unfinished business. Number one, discussion and consideration of agreement with first try-on for financial services associated with seeking installment purchase financing for Newtown Road Roundabout and local government commission approval at a rate not to exceed $10,000 and authorize the administrator to execute agreement pending village attorney's review. Christina?
So, this is the first try-on on financial agreement where they will basically help us through the financing for the associated roundabout, and actually...
So, do we need, should we hold on this?
Yeah, we could actually table this.
Because I don't really wanna give them money and then they're doing the roundabout.
Let's table this until, like...
December meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
See what happens.
Table two.
Yeah. Are you guys good to table this to the December 2nd meeting, or December 8th meeting?
On that simple, yeah.
So, us, so we can find out? Okay. December 8th, Austin.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. All right. Next up is consider approval of agreement with first try-on for financial services associated with seeking installment purchase financing for Village Hall and local government commission approval at a rate not to exceed $15,000 and authorize the administrator to execute agreement pending village attorney's review. Didn't we do this?
We have not done this in its entirety. We looked at our work order, but we didn't look at the actual.
Okay.
So, this is basically the same thing, first try-on, helping us to look at installment finance purchasing with Village Hall property for an estimated borrowing of one to two million dollars. Their fee is $10,000 to $15,000, and this is just for Village Hall.
Can we roll their financing into the financing? Can we roll their fee into the financing?
We should be able to, if we're not...
That's actually where they contemplate in the compensation, especially if it's a bond.
If we don't, then we'll just spend our capital, but we will try to.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Christina on this? I feel like we've talked about this, like, we have talked a lot. Anybody have any questions for Christina?
I don't.
Joe?
Yeah, I do.
Okay. All right. So, I need a motion to approve agreement with first try-on for financial services associated with seeking installment purchase financing for Village Hall and local government commission approval at a rate not to exceed $15,000 and authorize the administrator to execute agreement pending the village attorney's review.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Jamie? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, motion passes. Sorry, I didn't hear you. You guys... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, motion passes. Sorry, I didn't hear you. You guys speak up. Talked in the good ear, I'm getting all that I came here. Uh, next up is discussion and consideration of courtyards at Marvin full bond release. Row hit, you're up.
Alright, so, thank you. Last time we had a partial bond release because the HOA noted that they didn't, uh, plant enough trees to provide ninety-five percent screening. Since then, the contractor has planted several trees which in the pictures in the packet are small, but within six years, they said they'll grow to a size they'll basically be touching. Um, and so I recommend the release of the remaining bond that was, um, one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars.
Okay, do they comply with what I was, they were supposed to do?
I identified all of five tiny trees, I said plant them here, they did, so.
Okay.
We're good.
Call this when we approve the.
Yeah.
Partial, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, and Chaplain, you're good with all this?
I am.
Okay. Alright, so I need a motion to approve the courtyard at Marvin Phase One A full bond release in the amount of one thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, thank you. Next up is discussion of ethics training webinar. Um, Austin, this is you.
Uh-huh. Just a reminder that all recently elected officials need to complete this ethics training webinar.
Who hasn't done it yet?
Me.
Andy, anybody else?
Andy, Jamie, as far as I know, Jamie, Joe, and Bob.
Seriously, guys?
Whenever you completed, I need to, I need you to send me your certificates so I can put it on file.
Come on.
So until I have your certificate, you haven't done it.
Uh, Andy, you took it?
No.
Oh.
I'm the only one that is ethical here, so, come on, fellas.
Indeed. No, thank you for doing that, Austin. Probably was the one that brought it up.
So, do we have dates for everybody, or is it just like a?
It is a resource you can access. Anytime to do it, I think it's two hours.
Okay, can you send this to our, my fellow, um, members of council?
I will send it again.
Again? Again? Guys.
I'm just trying to find that two hours.
You can split it up, Joe.
I don't think you can.
Can you?
I'm not sure, I don't have to take it.
Alright, so we're gonna say by the December, by the December eighth meeting, this needs to be done.
Yes.
It absolutely needs to be done by that point.
Okay, by December eighth, it needs to be done. Joe?
You got it.
Find two hours.
Do you want a reminder at the next meeting?
Yeah, I do. Austin, thank you.
Tim, just a question. Can we discuss this, that once you take it, you're good for your old term, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Hence, there isn't, I'm the only ethical one here.
Indeed.
Yep, alright. Thank you. Okay, next up is discussion and consideration of rescheduling December fifteenth popular council due to conflict with planning board meeting. Well, planning boards should just move their meeting. Just kidding, I'm just kidding, planning board, everybody calm now.
When you guys set the state, set this date last time, it just didn't occur to me that's a planning board meeting.
Alright.
You guys can reschedule.
Bob, this is me and you.
Right, I, I, again, I, I, I look, I'm open. I think we. It's whatever you wanna do. You can do it the week of the council meeting, somewhere.
Why don't we just do it the fourteenth? We'll just do it on a Tuesday, on a Monday instead of a Tuesday.
That's fine.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Is that good, Austin?
Uh, that's fine, Monday.
We don't have Monday night meetings, we're already doing. Cause we can't do it the week before, cause that's our meeting.
Can't do it, you already said you couldn't do it the week after.
Yeah, cause that's the week.
Things are getting heavy.
Next week's meeting, right?
Yeah.
From seven to seven, probably six to seven.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so let's just move it to the fourteenth.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Hold on, I'm doing that now. I'm in my calendar. Okay, alright. Alright, uh, so do I need a motion to change that?
No.
Are we good? Okay. Housekeeping, alright. Uh, next up is discussion of employee statement of economic interest, statement of economic interest and code of ethics inventory. Uh, Austin, that's you.
There you go. Uh, you, you guys have an updated form in front of you. Uh, Mark has got his forms in, so there is only one person who has not. Um, I thought he was gonna have them in today, but I haven't heard from him.
Have we heard from him at all, since he didn't?
I have talked to him on the, I did talk to him on the phone. Um, he said he would get them in, he's emailed me tw- uh, twice to send them to him, I've sent them a couple times, just have not got them back.
Okay. Uh, update, I, we don't have a meeting between now and our work session? For the strategic?
No, there's not another strategic planning committee, you could.
They'll meet on November fifth.
So let's assess this at the work session, is everyone good with that? I mean, he's gotta get it in.
So, on the, on the work session?
Yeah. Yeah.
Same item.
Yeah, but let's, let's stress that it needs to get in. Alright. Good?
You don't take care of that.
Yeah. You're welcome. I emailed Mark. Asked him a text.
I've called, I called.
I'm just kidding. No, actually I did. Um, alright, next up, new business. Uh, number one, discussion and considerate, discussion and consider approval of contract for facility scheduling software for remainder of F, uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-one with provision that staff will research and compare similar project products prior to fiscal year twenty-one-twenty-two. Derek? Hi Derek.
Hello. What's up, buddy? Um, so I've been looking for.
Come here, so we can see closer to my.
Talk loud, Derek.
I've been looking for.
They're all done, done, there. Not, not, not me, John, and you, Russ, but the other two are.
Been looking for ways to streamline the facility rental process, um, both with uh, the questions that we receive about the availability, the cost, um, but, and then also the actual processing of the paperwork. And Rec Desk has come across my plate multiple times. Um, it's promoted by the North Carolina Parks and Rec Association. Waxall uses it, Stallings uses it, um, but I think like forty-four different municipalities in North Carolina use it. Anyways, it's an online platform, puts all of our facility rental stuff on the website. Um, take, will free Nancy and I up a lot. Uh, obviously there's a cost associated with this, um, but I, I did the math for the man-hours versus this, and we come out way cheaper, uh, streamlining everything onto an online platform. If you go to Waxall's website, you pick a facility, click right there and see when it's available, you know, when it's not available, put in your request, submit your security deposit, and then boom, it's done. Um, I've gone as far as to start setting up like a, like a trial one with them. I've been on the phone with their service reps. Um, they can handle everything that we need as far as resident versus non-resident, um, bearing rates based on days. Uh, they can do the community garden rentals.
So they can do the community garden, picnic shelter?
Yeah.
Whatever?
Yeah, whatever we come up with, they can do.
Okay.
Now, we're in a, we're, because of our size, we're in the lowest tier, so we don't wanna just create stuff just to have it.
Right.
Obviously, it might, you know, it would bump us up eventually, but right now, we're in the lowest tier for pricing, so. They're giving us like three months free, um, you can cancel at any time. Don't, they'll re, you know, refund any money of unused time. It's, um, it's like zero risk involved in it.
Derek, one thing I don't note here is if you have money in your budget for this, or are you asking for additional?
Um, I'm asking for additional money.
So we'll have to come back and do a budget amendment at a later date? Um, for approximately? Twenty-five hundred. Twenty-five hundred bucks. We'll pull it either from contingency or administrator discretion. But we'll do, we'll have to do a budget amendment.
Twenty-five hundred is an annual?
Yeah.
That's an annual, that would be July first of next year, so.
But you're saying it's gonna save us money for your time and Nancy's time booking all this?
Personally, I believe so. I mean, cause I'm, I'm getting, I get calls seven days a week on my cellphone, the work cellphone.
It's not gonna save actual dollars, cause their salary is still their salary, but it's time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I get it. Their, their time is valuable, they could be doing something else.
Doing something else, yeah.
Yeah, I get it. It's, it's a.
Derek, who else is using this?
Waxall, Laddington, there's like forty-four municipalities.
Yeah, the, the two websites we looked at were Waxall and Stallings.
Oh, Stallings. Stallings.
Now, who are you referencing?
No, Stallings. Okay, any other questions? Joe?
No, thank you.
Alright, so do we need to get more quotes?
No, you, so this is kind of a, I guess, I don't know if you wanna consider it a sole source, but we were required to have three quotes, so if you wanna just ask them to, um, alleviate the requirement of the three quotes, and then next year we will get, we're gonna try this out for the year.
Yeah, okay.
So we can try it out, see how it works.
At this, I think at this price.
The twelve hun- is it twelve hundred, fourteen, fifteen?
It was fourteen, it's probably less if we started now.
Yeah, we're fine.
Yeah, it's under that, if we come back. But we do, we start with that, right?
Yeah.
But next year we would need to.
Yeah, next year.
Okay, so I need a, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the contract for the remainder of twenty-twenty-one fiscal year and the proposed quote with Rec.
Rec Desk.
Rec Desk. And waive the three qu- now, I guess we don't need to waive it, cause we don't have to have it, cause it's under the threshold. Quote, and for, and authorize the administrator to execute the contract and do a budget amendment.
Yeah, we'll get that.
So moved.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Alright, Derek, thank you. Alright, number two is discussion and consideration of Tullmore Phase One repairs. Derek, that you did.
This is a, a.
Oh, maybe it's Christina.
No, it's, it's Derek, and I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to him in just a second. He came to me the other day with, um, some questions about getting the, an agreement, um, for some.
Thank you.
Repairs that were needed in Phase One that were identified as the vendor is outmobilized, forcing on Phase Two. Typically, in a normal situation, you would have, um, a contingency on any agreement, so when things are recognized out in the field, when things are happening, you have the authority to, um, add a few things to discuss the service if needed. Um, within, within obviously a, a minor amount. So that's kind of what he's asking for here, is the vendor has discovered some issues in Phase One that's already been completed, that's due to the rain events that we've had, you know, flooding, um, proper drainage that's needed, so he's looking to reroute some of the trailing. He's got pictures in there to show you kind of what it looks like, and Derek, I'll turn it over to you.
Basically, some, sorry. She summarized it for me, but yeah, so obviously Blue Ridge Trail Works is presently on site, um, working on Phase Two. Um, but the, the recent rains have just magnified what has been an ongoing problem. Um, we've tried to rake material back and, and put it back in place, uh, as you can see in the third picture there. Um, the, the literal amount of washout, I mean, it's eight, ten feet off the trail. Sorry about the blurriness, but the, the last picture really shows you, I mean, that's, that's trail material that, that should be staying in place under, um, that. It's not, it's not just the rain, it's, it's where it is, um, next to that creek.
Didn't they move it, like, before they built it, didn't they move it already once around this barbed wire that now they have to move?
We've moved it several times, we've walked it. Done numerous things with it, and it was thought that where it was placed was gonna be a good spot, but obviously, there's still some issues.
So do we have?
I mean, I think when we walked it, what, three, four years ago when I was on the board, it was, we knew that there might be some issues in a couple of those low spots that are, um, where that creek, where the creek floods.
I mean, we moved this way up in one of those fields, and a lot, there were a lot of things that we changed before it was built, but.
I just remember the barbed wire that we've got a, so do we have the easements to do this?
Yeah, it's all within the easement.
Alright, so you need a motion to approve this? Oh, okay, here we go. Alright. Anybody have any questions for Derek?
I did note where I would be taking the money from.
Which is great.
Which, uh, I did, I did wanna highlight that, um, bringing on John at the park has made a, a, a big help, and we were able to do some things that, in-house, that I thought, you know, I would have to pay for, um, by going to the manufacturer of the playground equipment, and, um, that five thousand dollars I had requested in the CIP budget, we did that in-house. So that was huge.
So we'll take part of that.
Huge savings there.
So we'll have to do a budget amendment, um, more than likely.
So we'll, so we should have two budget amendments for the work session?
Yeah, we'll look into it. We, we may not have to, but if we do, we'll, we'll work around.
Alright.
It's gonna be pretty clean. I mean, he's moving money to pay for one project.
But he was already taken care of, so we saved it. Okay. So I need to make a motion to consider exemption from procurement policy three point two to require three informal quotes and authorize, and authorization of the village administrator to execute agreement with Blue Ridge Trail Work for repairs and construction of Tullmore Phase One for thirty-six hundred dollars. All's in favor? Further discussion? All's in favor? Motion passes. Thank you, Derek. Alright, next up, number three, consider adoption of RS dash twenty-twenty dash ten dash oh one, a resolution opposing the Park Place residential and commercial rezoning request. Is it Park Place? That's Christina. That's Christina. But is it just Park Place?
It is.
Or is it Boardwalk Two?
Do you want me to give a?
You're done. Derek's done. Is it just Park Place?
For now, it is Park Place, um.
Not Boardwalk Two?
No, not Boardwalk, that's next month.
Come on, everybody, just laugh.
You don't know it, so get out of it.
Um, so.
I know I never buy those, I never have enough money. Sorry, where'd that go?
Oh, you're fine.
Sorry.
Um, so this is a development that's happening in the unincorporated area of, in, near Wesley Chapel, and it's part of WUMA, which again is Western Union Municipal Alliance. Um, Mayor Polino has brought this, uh, resolution that is, uh, kind of, kind of the same resolution that they're passing, but tailored to Marvin, where we would join Wesley Chapel in their, uh, opposition of a, uh, very high-density residential, um, development.
Okay.
Um, that's pretty much all this is. Um, Mayor Polino, if you wanna add anything else, um.
We're not.
You're welcome.
No, and Andy was there, and it's just, I mean, part of this group is to support each other.
I think it's great.
While we formed it, and, and when we do these kind of things, it shows more of, uh, an alliance, and it lets, you know, Union County commissioners know that, you know, there, there are power numbers, um, there's power numbers, and, you know, this, this kind of stuff can happen to us and our boards, and we may be needing their support sometimes. You just never know, and it's just a good, it's kind of why we formed this group, so. And it was their recommendation of the resolution, so we're basically, I think, copying what they had proposed. Um, and, you know, if it passes, if you guys want to move forward with this, we can present them, like, we, uh, adopted it, uh, in next list meetings.
Alright, I, Joe, I think this is great. I think this is exactly what WUMA was kind of formed for, to support each other, and so like, it just gives more weight behind Wesley Chapel and what they're trying to do. I think it's great.
It's, it's fully in Wesley Chapel, right?
Correct.
Okay.
If you were in Union County, the, the Union County meeting that Row Hit and I were at, but, uh, is there anyone else from Marvin there? I don't think.
It's just the three of us.
Oh, no, he's talking about the land use plan meeting.
There was a, 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 a land use plan meeting, and it's really telling, and the county leaders are out there saying, you know, when they're, we're talking about stuff that we don't want, and they're, they're, they're pushing the other way, and there's, there's some of the comments that were made, or were alarming, like, what did it for us? I mean, and, and it's really, I mean, we formed these municipalities for a reason, and we wanna stick to our ordinances, and we would, and we would ask that the zones that are considered the donut holes of, and there are, you know, or that abuts or municipalities, that they would respect what we're doing, so it matches up and pairs up nicely, so.
I think it's great. Anybody else have any questions for the mayor?
No, it's just good job, Joe. I mean, you know, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't do any of this other than saying that, yes, we can support it, Andy and I, we need to say.
Alright.
We would say we would bring it up to the council and support, so I appreciate your support.
Alright, so, like to make a motion to consider, or to, I guess, to adopt RS twenty-twenty, sorry, RS. RS-2020, sorry, RS-2020-10-01, a resolution opposing the Park Place residential and commercial rezoning request. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right.
Thank you all, WUMA thanks you.
WUMA thanks you. You're welcome, WUMA. All right, next up, number four, discussion of Halloween 2020 in light of COVID-19, Austin. Really? We're not rescheduling Halloween.
You're not rescheduling, you're issuing a formal, a formal recommendation.
Oh, what's our recommendation?
Well, that's for you to decide, but Wesley, Lake Park has stated that their public announcement is that Halloween is not a sanctioned town event, and that if you are going to participate, you do so at your, your own choice. I provided the state guidelines, if you want me to post a blurb, just saying, review the state guidelines, take caution, just really tell me how you want me to address the public on this issue.
I mean, it's like, you know.
Well, I got a call from our HOA president, what we're doing, and I said, I don't think we've even decided, I think, just for your, all your knowledge, I think CBC is recommending against it, I don't think there's an official, is there official, something official from the state?
There is, there are state guidelines in your packet from the Department of Health and Human Services, they provide alternatives to traditional trick-or-treating. You can just, you can just tell me to post a link to this for people to review, or if you just want to say the villages aren't taking a stance, just really whatever you.
So last year, y'all had something similar come up, not because of COVID, but because, I think it was on a.
It was during a rain.
Yeah, there was a heavy rain.
It was on a rain.
I think our comment should be, if you live in assisted living, and, or you're over the age of 60, we recommend you not go trick-or-treating. I don't know how, I, I, it's as funny as, to me, as doing this.
I mean, in case we're all wearing masks for God's sake, and they're all six feet apart, so what else can we do?
Here's the thing. I expected this. I can't, I don't believe it's up to us to tell them.
Me neither.
That we can or can't, that's not my job.
Last year, we sent something out to the HOA president, said, do your thing, whatever y'all want that to be, and that's pretty much it.
Ding ding.
Post something on Nextdoor.
Yeah, this, the thing is.
That says.
What?
Review the NC Department of Health and Human Services, proceed if you're in risk.
And I would.
I mean, I agree with Councilman Lyon saying that, you know, I was driving today to the neighborhoods, and I was actually thinking about this topic that we've kind of come across. There's a lot of homes that are actually better, and think people want to have a trick or treat. And I, I remember seeing, I think in the news, it must have been about five days ago, six days ago, that Charlotte is going to still have Halloween. I think I remember seeing the banner headline in the Charlotte Observer.
Oh, my God.
Who's going to have Halloween, so I agree with this, it's like, give people the recommendations of what they, like, they should do, you know.
Yep.
But I would, I would encourage the HOAs to publicize what they're going to do, because there's always a state of confusion, parents don't know who's going to do what.
So I'm sending emails to the HOAs, too, just saying, make this clear to your residents?
No, just let everybody send out something on there, don't, I mean, we're butt-in skiing into places we don't need to butt-in skiing to.
I'm just saying, because there's always a bunch of confusion, the HOAs are the ones that are going to say whether, you know, what's going to happen in the neighborhoods.
I know, but like, why are we getting involved in that? I don't need to get involved in that.
Do y'all want us to send the same statement we sent last year that basically said, we don't care, y'all do what you want to do from the HOA standpoint, just tell your people?
I think you should still add, if you're 60 and over, she should, she should revert to next year's Halloween.
That would be funny to see if anybody would think.
I think.
Yeah, make it be a funny, all right, you guys just put, yeah, just, but we're.
Notify the HOAs, yes or no?
It's recommended that you stay.
That's what we did last year.
Fine, yeah, okay, send it out to the HOAs, too.
Joe, you can't go trick-or-treating this year, sorry.
It's, believe it or not, it's a bigger issue for me because I get over 200 kids, and the mayor is going to close the big Halloween event, and I might get, you know, who knows, get sued for having, it rained, but the good news is, it's on a Saturday, so there's no confusion on what date they're going to have it.
Oh, my God. It's the 31st.
What?
What?
It's on the Saturday, it's on the Saturday.
It's the 31st, Joe.
Joe's going to get sued for a super spread over there.
All right, do you guys, do you guys want to send it out to the HOAs, or just put it out on Nextdoor and MailChimp?
Well, here's the deal, I think HOAs reach the full audience better than we do in Nextdoor, so that's why the HOA makes sense.
Okay, so both? Both, they answered both, okay, all right. Great, any, any other discussion of Halloween and COVID? Okay, super. Next up, number five, is going to be, consider call for a public hearing for the Village of Marvin 2020 land use plan for November the. Rohit?
10th.
Okay, so I need a motion to call for a public hearing for the Village of Marvin 2020 land use plan at the November 10th meeting.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, so we can, we can approve it then, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll have all the language for that, okay.
Just like you see these, you have a public hearing, you close the public hearing and any votes.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is number six, consider adoption of general fund budget ordinance OR-2020-10-01 to receive and appropriate revenue from a developer for a sidewalk connectivity project in Weddington Chase. Christina. Oh, I knew this one, we talked about it, didn't we?
No, we didn't. Is it misnumbered? Because I've got, go ahead, Rohit, this is not right.
Okay, sure, so.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, it's just a little bit.
Yes, that's, that's it, that's it.
It's just a pass, it's not a con.
Yeah.
Go ahead, you, go ahead.
All right, sure, so as part of Marvin Gardens' original site approval.
Hey, can you two mute yourselves, you're speaking extremely loud. Thank you. They both did it, though.
My fault.
I'm so mean, I'm sorry, thank you guys, I'm sorry. Okay, go, Rohit, sorry.
Hang on one second. I'm not, let me see this, because this is different than the agenda. The actual.
Did I say it wrong?
I had a minute.
No, you said it right, but it's just on the agenda, let me see that.
That's the next, this is the next one, this is the next item on the, in the agenda.
Do we not have supporting documentation for that first one?
It shouldn't be in there.
Yeah.
It's right here.
Because I have it in, because I have it in mind.
And there should be an ordinance attached to it?
Yeah.
And a memo from Rohit?
Yeah, there's a memo in there.
You, you must have mixed it up, they're exact copies.
No.
I have a memo right here from Rohit for $5,000.
Yeah.
I have the ordinance amending the general fund budget, and then I have the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, where number 15 is where they say.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Yours, oh, you know what? Look, yours got mixed up, it's, it's back here. There's the memo.
Okay, gotcha, I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, you're good, okay.
Good, good, good.
All right, so just real quick recap, so in the original Marvin Gardens approval, number 15, in that list of conditions, was that Marvin Gardens' developer would pay Weddington Chase HOA to build a sidewalk that does connect into a trail that's already built right now, but it specifically says that we would be, you know, they would pay us, we would pay the HOA, and that means we have to have a budget amendment so that we can express this increase in revenue as well as expense. It's pretty, it's pretty much just.
I was going to say, so we're just passing it through?
Yeah.
I think this is good.
And Rohit, was this just a sidewalk, is it going to be widened for a dollar block?
There's no other specifications, it's up to the HOA, but the trail on the Marvin Gardens side is like, like a gravel trail, like you would see at one of our, you know, neighborhood trails.
Because originally, it was supposed to be a road connection into that.
Yeah, there's no road connection, it's just a sidewalk.
So they, they won't allow road connection into that?
Don't know about won't allow, but there's no terms about, you know, that, as far as we're concerned, and also, there, the parking lot area where the trail does go up to the property line, the parking lot does not go up to the property line, so they would, Marvin Gardens side, they would have to, you know, revise their plan to have that road go up to the property line. But Weddington Chase HOA, anyway, their HOA board said they were not interested in the roadway connection off of Woodmont, just the sidewalk connection.
Yeah, they're going to want it later, though, once, once the traffic and the widening all comes in, because it's hard to get a left out of there, so that's the only reason. They talked about, they shot it down, I just thought, I wasn't sure if it was for a road or a walkway, or for like, a golf cart, if people wanted to go shopping, or a golf cart.
I mean, I suppose you could drive a golf cart if the Weddington Chase side built it wide enough, because the Marvin Gardens side's about, oh, six feet wide. But the road, I mean, we can address the road at a later time, it's not part of this, this is, this should be very straightforward.
All right, so I need, so I need a motion to adopt the general fund budget ord, budget ord, general fund budget ordinance OR-2020-10-01 to receive and appropriate revenue from a developer for a sidewalk connectivity project in the Weddington Chase subdivision. Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Next up is number seven. What?
I'm going to just.
Reverb, okay. Number seven, consider adoption of general fund budget ordinance OR-2020-10-02 to amend the engineering for streets transportation budget to process current and expected invoice payments for professional engineering services. Christina.
Yes, this is the one that I was on, sorry.
Okay.
This is really just an, an organizational transfer, we're moving $5,000 from one line out into another to cover what we anticipate to be engineering costs for the rest of the year for streets-related projects.
Okay, and we've got the money?
We do.
Yep. So we're just moving it around?
Yeah, we're just moving it from one line into another.
All right, anybody have any questions for Christina about that?
No. No.
So I need a motion to adopt the general fund budget ordinance OR-2020-10-02 to amend the engineering for streets transportation budget to process current and expected invoice payments for professional, professional engineering services.
Okay, so this one's a little bit more complicated.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up, number eight, consider adoption of general fund budget ordinance OR-2020-10-03 to amend the development fee revenue budget in anticipation of an increase in development reimbursement fees associated with professional engineering services in the planning and zoning department budget. Christina.
Yeah, sorry, I was having an inside conversation. This one's a little more complicated. This one's a little more complicated, as we anticipate revenues for the year, we do anticipate some of the development projects that we have coming onboard, where we're going to receive money from developers as a reimbursable expense that is associated with a development. For example, Marvin Gardens, when they have plan reviews, or when they have issues that come up, our engineer goes out, tries to reconcile the issues, look at it, look at the plans, and, and all this stuff, and once that bill is generated back to us, we turn around and bill it back to the developer. So it's really hard for us to kind of estimate some of these revenues that are coming in, we always try to do it very conservative, but what we've seen over the last couple of years is these, these numbers have continuously increased. And so in order for us to stay conservative and not go over budget on those revenues, we really like for it to be under budgeted in revenues, and then we come back and do these budget amendments as we need to. So what we're doing now is we have assessed what we have already taken in for development fees and revenue, and Jamie, I don't know if you have that number off the top of your head, but it was 22,000, I think, the last we had looked.
I think so.
And we had only budgeted 5,000, so we've, we've brought in a lot more money in terms of revenue for that, and what we've done is estimated out what we think is going to be the next couple of months. We will probably come back to you with the same ordinance and put more money into it as we have more developments coming onboard, or as we have developments that may have issues that require more engineering services, but this will continue to be a budget amendment needed, so.
But we're not spending extra money.
We're spending extra money that we're receiving.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, it is.
You're getting something more fees and expenses.
Yeah, more fees, okay. All right, does anybody have any questions for Christina on this one?
I don't, I do not.
All right, nope, nope, okay. So I need a motion to approve the general fund budget ordinance OR-2020-10-03 to amend the development fee revenue budget in anticipation of an increase in development reimbursement fees associated with professional engineering services in the planning and zoning department budget.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Next up.
Holy moly, we've got a lot.
Consider adoption of general fund budget ordinance OR-2020-10-04 to process mailing 1,500 letters as part of the proposed annexation process. This is Christina.
So this is real simple, obviously, it's an $850 preparation to fund some mailers that are needed, this is a really good example, though, as we go into the budget retreat in February, where we start talking about dollars that go to the administrative discretion line item, I can't spend any money out of there without you guys knowing where it goes, so there's a lot of times where we have a large amount of money in there, you see that there's $11,000 that was budgeted in there, this is where I'm taking money out, spending it, telling you guys where it's going.
All right, anybody have any questions for Christina on that? Okay, so I need a motion to approve or adopt general fund budget ordinance OR-2020-10-04 to process mailing 1,500 letters as part of the proposed annexation process.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, number 10, consider adoption of RS-2020-10-02 to designate the administrator as the quote-unquote "hearing officer" for the debt sign-off program and to perform the duties as prescribed for the Village of Marvin. Christina, this is you.
Yeah, this is basically just procedural, when we send letters out to debt collection, which is basically, if you don't pay your taxes, we send it off, and we can garnish your, your tax-free fund if you don't pay your property taxes, we have to have a hearing officer so that if someone needs to dispute it, they have a, kind of an arbitrary person to have that with.
Anybody have any questions for Christina on that? All right, I need a motion to adopt resolution RS-2020-10-02 to designate the village administrator as the quote-unquote "hearing officer" for the debt sign-off program and to perform the duties as prescribed for the Village of Marvin.
Real quick, what did we do before?
This is a new requirement.
New requirement.
Okay, okay.
Further discuss, further discussions? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up is.
You.
I don't have a cover sheet for it. Oh, okay. Discussion of responses to development solicitations. Okay, this is me, so I had, or I know I've gotten, and I think Joe got one, too, an email saying, hey, we heard about you guys developing your downtown district, we'd love to be involved. I didn't know how to respond to it, I thought we should all have a discussion about how we're supposed to respond to it, this is our general policy for initiating development, kind of how it works, and then I was just thinking we could just have like, a blurb that said, that we can email back to people, and just say, hey, thank you so much for your interest, we don't have any information, but we encourage all interested parties to, you know, keep up with our website. Because I, I think, I think we all need, kind of to be on the same page, I don't want one person saying this, and somebody else saying that, and getting somebody in hot water.
Well, especially, we're getting these emails, I don't know if the rest of the council got it, but I was there for 10.
Oh, no, we lost Joe. Oh, God. Oh, hold on. Joe, are you there? Joe, are you there? Joe, are you there? Okay, hold on, we can't, we can't hear him. Where, what happened? What's, what, what's-
The minute Rohit leaves, I'm gone.
What's the, uh, what's the-
I'm looking, hold on.
The triangle, yeah. Oh, Rohit!
Rohit, the second you left, the audio went out. We don't know.
The whole screen went blank and then it came back up.
Yeah, we had a yield that's some sort of-
There's a gremlin in here.
Sabotage.
Worst thing the world's ever happened to.
Joe, can you hear us? Okay, we can't hear you. Bob, can you hear us?
Uh-huh.
Okay, we just can't hear them. Okay, hang tight. Sorry, guys. Oh, they're going again.
That's what it was, though.
I heard a lot.
Hey!
Oh, hey! Say it again.
I heard a lot of screaming, like it's somebody from somewhere else in another-
It was me. Okay, we can hear you now. Bob, can you take yourself off mute so we can make sure we hear you?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, cool. Alright. So Joe, sorry, you're talking.
Yeah, I forgot what I was saying.
Um, you have those-
Good answer, Joe.
You have those, got the emails?
Yes, I, I clearly, you know, when I received it and stuff, and if you look at this letter, it's like, it's, it's a, basically a developer who does hotels and stuff. And I'm not sure if he's offering his services as, you know, someone who develops land like this and, uh, and is just wanting to be a part of it. So it was uncomfortable even responding, and I chose not to respond. And I'm like, can we brought it up? Because I think we should at least let everyone know we're all on the same page, how we respond to it. And I have no problem forwarding him the, you know, hey, um, uh, get with the plant, uh, you know, our planner on what you'd like to do, our administrator and, you know, process with what your idea is. But I'm not looking to, I mean, because there could be people in the community, and it sounds like he did live in our community, but that could help us anyways. And if they're willing to offer, put a bono type stuff on, you know.
Should we, should we maybe direct them to Rohit and he can field the calls? Because I mean, because I mean, maybe it is somebody that has experience and-
Rohit has a-
You leave the room, you get volunteered.
Oh my gosh.
Well, well, given his background, we're certainly not interested in a hotel. So I'm not sure of the benefit, but the fact that he sent out an email to us and we, Kim and I were not to- I just don't respond to that individually. And, but there should be some response and say, "Hey, uh, you know, I would forward this to so-and-so administrator to find out what it is that they want." Because technically, we're not supposed to be discussing with developers on our own. And, you know, we encourage everybody, if you're gonna have a meeting with a developer, that's fine, but take another staff member, or I think it even is in our ordinance, is there another council member, some, you know, that you're too big for it and needs to know those meetings.
So, so can we forward them to you, Rohit?
Yeah.
To field? That's, that's even better. Thank, thank you so much. Here's our planner's con- email address. Please contact him.
I understand, but how, how's Rohit gonna respond?
Well, because he'll talk and we'll find out what they want and what their agenda is and-
I, I turn away a lot of people at the door, basically.
Yeah.
Metaphorically, where they propose something that's not in the planning's plan, and I tell them, "It, it's not gonna pass," and then they don't apply.
Alright, is everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Right. So if anybody gets any emails and just, "Thank you so much. Here's our planner's email address to forward it on." Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you. That was it. That was, that was mine. Okay, oh, yay. Okay, that was it. Thank you. Uh, next up, number 12, discussion of establishing age requirements for advisory boards. Austin?
Uh, so, as I told you before, Kim, the, we have had high school students applying for vacancies on our advisory boards, and after consulting with Chaplain, we think that it's probably best to establish an age requirement, considering that the planning board and the Board of Adjustment make often controversial decisions about the land development.
Okay.
This is something we can bring in a future meeting. I don't know if you wanna, I guess this needs to be in an ordinance.
I mean, I, I agree. I think we need to have it, but I think it needs to be older than 18.
Yeah, I was just thinking at least make them a, an adult, but at 18...
Yeah, that's your discretion.
I mean, I think-
I think Jamie, I would agree that you're fully grown at 18.
Well, you might not be fully mature at 18. I don't know.
But we'll give you a gun.
Go that way.
I don't know. What do you guys think?
Here, here's, I, just my, my opinion is, you set it at 18. Again, for, for that purpose. But if you're putting, if you're coming onto a board, then you're gonna have to have some level of experience.
Experience, yeah.
So by all means, be- because we can't speak out of both sides of our mouth.
Right.
We can't say, "Hey, we, we, we want these, you know, these new minds to come in here," and then go, "But we just don't want you to do it." So, but listen, if you're, if it's a, on the planning board and there's a position opens up and you've got someone who's got 35 years of experience doing municipality restructuring, and someone who's just graduated from high school, you know, they can't feel bad.
Right.
I, I just think it's-
Yeah, they gotta go on their own merit as well. If they, if that's something that they've been studying and they're really into and they have something to bring to the table, then by all means, bring new ideas. I mean, that, I wouldn't wanna, you know, turn somebody away that could really be a, a huge asset. And there's-
I mean, I'm, I'm good with that. So do you wanna put together, what do we need a, what ordinance?
Resolution, okay.
If you do a resolution, bring to the work session, whatever else.
So work session, resolution?
Yeah. So, so we're, are you guys good with 18? And then Austin will work on a resolution to bring to the work session?
I, I, um, I, I think that the legal age, you know, being the 18 to vote, I think that entitles person as a citizen to participate in government.
Okay.
I will say that, uh, I did-
Technically, yeah, same thing for me, uh, 18, because even like the class I teach at St. Matthew's, the 17-year-olds are considered a minor still, which you have to be careful in where they can be and if they can be with an adult alone, that sort of thing. So is, there's so many crazy things that are out there, but 18 is, is I think the magic number for, or any, as far as my opinion for any boards or any positions.
This is not to distract from the conversation. I, I just wanted to ask this too, since we're doing this, Austin. Given the parameters of attendance with the council, if somebody volunteer does not attend, and we started off meeting with this, if somebody is, um, not attending voluntarily on boards, whether they are different communities, when do we cut it off? In other words, do we need to put that in writing of some sort, like if four times, if-
I'm off.
You don't hear from somebody, three times, maybe, or perhaps-
There's already talked about that. Standards in that. Yeah, it's already in the rules.
We, we have, uh, we have an attendance policy for our boards, but that's not the agenda item, so we can't talk about it.
Look, I will say one last thing. The interested high school students, uh, did say that in the future you all should consider a youth advisory board to, as, as the village grows and as far as what recreation programs could be added, a youth advisory board would be useful and something that the youth would appreciate.
Great. You could have them write up a proposal about how that would look. I think that's a great idea. Seriously. I mean, I, I think whoever suggested it, have them write up a proposal, see what it would look like. We'll take a look at it.
There's municipal houses that have youth councils, actually. They could be like you guys.
Seriously, like, I mean, go back to them and tell them to write up something. Let's take a look at it.
Yeah.
I think it's great. Somebody wants to get involved in their community, let's talk about it.
Absolutely. Get started early.
Yep. Alright, cool beans. So we'll talk, so we'll, uh, Austin will bring that back to us in the work session.
Which, the, the age requirement, yes.
Age requirement, yeah.
Resolution, yes.
Yep. Okay, yeah. Um, anything else for Austin on that? Nope? Okay. Uh, next up, number 13, discussion and consideration of RS-2020-10-03 resolution to match, to pledge to match X percent if awarded CRTPO discretionary funding.
So I'm gonna start off real fast. This is a project that we've been talking about last couple of meetings. Um, we've, we've had some support from you all, but we've never really had that bit of resolution that tells what level of support, and that's something that's needed for this grant proposal, which is due this week. Um, in order to get the most points within this project, there's a lot of different criteria that we have to kind of cross off and make sure that we're, um, adhering to in order to, to have that highest level of points. What, the first thing that you should have received is a, is an Excel spreadsheet with a bunch of numbers. Um, and I'll, I'll break this down in just a second as to what this exactly means. The second thing that's come around is a map that shows the segments of the greenway and what's existing, proposed, and, uh, what's programmed. And this is all driven from the master plan that was recently approved, um, that was conducted by Destination by Design. So there's a, there's a segment in here that Rohit is proposing to, um, seek funding for from the CRTPO based on, uh, grant match, which is, we would basically be putting in, what we estimate to be 40%, which gives us the highest percentage of points based on the criteria of what we're asking for, um, and what we're willing to give. And so that being said, we would have to identify roughly $800,000 over the next five years of how we would come up with the money to fund our match of the project. So what I've passed around is a estimate of PAO bill revenues and expenditures based on a lot of different projects that we've got going on. And, um, do you want to interject anything?
No, no, I'm good.
So if you look down the second table in the Excel spreadsheet that I've passed around, it talks about the expenses. And so these expenses are generated from the road, fog seal, preventive maintenance plan that you guys approved a couple of innings ago. Those numbers are there on the very top where it says general expenses. This is an idea where we had said we were gonna do fog sealing for the next, every other year for 10 years. So that's where those numbers are reflected and they're directly from, um, this. And I will pass this around so you can match it up at your leisure. Uh, the next line item is street resurfacing. Again, this $50,000 every other year is something that we've just arbitrarily set for general maintenance repairs. We don't have an exact number for that. It's just something we wanted to be cognizant of in the future and make sure we're planning. That number could be $10,000 one year, it could be $20,000, but we wanted to make sure that we had the funds available. The next line is DOT project matches. If you recall, there were, um, there was another scale that looks like this that has DOT funding. I'm gonna pass that around. And again, this is not of, uh, an actual contract that we have with DOT, but these are the DOT roads in which we think that they're going to resurface those with what amounts that we would be required for those roads. And they're very minor. So you see the 11,000 and the 8,000 on that third line, 11, 6, and then 7, 6. Y'all following me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the next line item is the roundabout match. If you recall, we had a roundabout match over here with this one, and then we had to come back behind and, and pay the differential. Uh, we have subsequently got that money back from DOT, and that's been put back into our fund balance. So I've got the four, the 250 that's in fund balance. I don't have it highlighted here because we can take that money out of fund balance and appropriate it. But it is there so that we know that it has to be paid. Uh, but I don't have that earmarked through PAO bill for the purposes of this illustration. The next thing is the Providence sidewalk. We are responsible for some level of support in that, which is pushed back to 2030. But I do have an estimate there, so we, estimate there so we know that it's there in the list and we've gotta prepare for that. And then the, the next project where it says STIP match, that's $100,000 that we've identified that we can take from PAO bill funds every year for the next five years. There are periods where, you see at the very bottom where we're gonna go into the negative, the 32,000 negative and then the 112 negative. This is an area where this project is contingent upon the success of the MSD District, the-
The Municipal Service District, right.
So a lot of the funding that we anticipate to receive for this project would result from that MSD District. Um, and if it's not successful, then obviously this project's not gonna be successful. We hope to identify funds there, and I'll let you guys take over from here.
Sure. Um, so this, um, this CRTPO application, the premise of it is that we are applying for CRTPO to give us 1.2 million dollars for, for a $2 million project. We have to assume in this application that we are going to do the downtown district, because that's what makes this a regionally impactful and competitive project.
And let me just stop you there, because assuming that that's gonna happen is, is we're making the assumption that the economic feasibility is proven to be successful. Now, if it's not, for whatever reason, and it's not something that we wanna phase in, depending on how we wanna do that, then this is, this is obviously not gonna be a, a project.
Right. So we're not trying to say that we're jumping the gun and saying we are doing the downtown district. If, if we don't do the district, then we're not gonna win this grant, which is fine. We just get this trail built another way. Um, but if we do do the downtown district, then this is a very regionally competitive and interesting project for CRTPO to fund the 1.2 million that we're asking for. And then we, um, we will also have to do the municipal service district, because that's basically, um, you know, the success of our downtown district is dependent on establishing a municipal service district to collect the funds, um, from those properties, as I've, um, described it before. So that's where, that's the first line of where I expect a big chunk of the match to come from. Um, so it's not, it's not that we are, um, you know, appropriating a whole ton of money from the general fund towards this match. That's kind of a backup, because we haven't actually established the municipal service district. You have to show CRTPO that, um, you know, our first line of attack for this match is that, um, municipal service district. And if we don't, we could potentially, uh, if we do the district but don't do the municipal service district, we could still, um, match it from a general fund. That's, that's, that's-
Kind of, you're talking about pulling money from, from the minis- from this municipal district. But we also talked about that money funding the development of this district as well.
Mm-hmm.
So how are we gonna pay for both?
When I, when I-
It's expensive.
Yeah, when I estimated the, uh, the, the revenues and expenses and, uh, kind of narrowed down a tax rate that would, um, be in the middle ground, I did estimate about somewhere around 200,000 to 400,000 to put towards the sidewalks and trails of this district. So it's already accounted, yeah.
The expense was estimated. Instead of us just paying for it.
Right, so-
So, so what you're saying is this grant will also help do this development as well. So it's not a separate thing that we're trying to fund two things out of this one?
No, no, no.
We're trying to fund the same thing out of-
So this gives us an extra 60%?
Right, right. This, this segment-
For this, for this area.
Okay, now I understand.
Right. So this segment would cost us 2 million. Um, there's, uh, there's extra fees, uh, percent contingency that CRTPO makes us add. So the 2.2 million from the, the master plan, it's, it's a lot more because you have to add those contingencies. So this section that I've highlighted in light blue is, uh, here, 2 million. So when we ask CRTPO for that 1.2 million and we match 800,000, that match would ideally be coming partially from the municipal, municipal service district, but also partially from asking developers of certain properties to build the sidewalk in front of their properties. And that's another $300,000 that we tell CRTPO we're matching, but we actually get from the developer directly.
Now, and, and all this is contingent upon us receiving it. Obviously, the developer doesn't develop, we don't get it. So we, at the end of the day, we've gotta come up with the $800,000. I just wanna make sure y'all understand of that. I've identified roughly 400 where we can have over the next five years. If we don't get any money from MSD or developers, we've gotta come up with the other 400,000. So at that point, we can talk about fund balance appropriation, which we're dipping into a little bit more than where I feel comfortable going. Um, we could also talk about installment financing with the park, refinancing the park again, and doing some type of installment financing for, for that. So we don't have to decide those things right here today, because we have to later accept the award. In, in concept, we need to be comfortable with the 800,000 and knowing that there's the risk that it, you know, it may not, the developers may not develop completely as we anticipate.
With money as cheap as it is right now, I would feel somewhat comfortable with doing a loan for that 400,000, if that's where it came to, because with this grant money, it could greatly accelerate our process here. And as you know, this is near, dear to my heart, to get these trails done. And this is a, a golden opportunity to make this work. So I think that this is a great direction and, uh, good job going down this road. I think it's, it's a good direction, however it gets done.
So if council's willing to go ahead and take the 40%, then that's how we'll do the resolution, knowing that we're on hold for, you know, the, the 800,000. But we do have to later solidify that in another acceptance of the award. And that'll give us some more time to actually massage some more numbers, come up with some assumptions. assumptions that are very, very low in terms of what we would generate from developers. And by that time, we will have maybe received notice on the award.
I mean, we'd still have to get it too.
Yeah.
Like it's not a given, so.
But I, I feel comfortable going after it because this could be, this could be a huge advantage to us all the way around, no matter how we have to come up with, you know, that eight hundred thousand dollars.
I agree.
I think it's totally achievable, so.
Me too.
And then also, Jamie, did you check to see what the amount is?
Yeah, I gave it to you. It was around fifty-eight thousand.
There.
Yeah, so currently we have fifty-eight thousand dollars that's in our Greenway Loop capital project. We could even pull some money from that. We actually have a lot of different tiny capital projects we can pull some money from. We've got a side capital project. So we can, we can come up with some funding sources in the interim.
And we can also apply for grants. We can apply for other grants to help us match that, that we applied to CRTPO.
And we'll, we'll continue to do these things over the next five years, just, just in concept, it's a five-year project. We need to be okay with the eight hundred thousand.
That's great.
Over five years should be easily attained, but I think that, especially with, with the way financing is right now and this district has a good chance of becoming a reality, so.
And then we also want to make sure that council is okay with the segment that we have selected to move forward in this application, which is.
Which is here. So not a hundred percent known which side of the street each of these it will be. We mostly know, but not a hundred percent. But the, the alignment, uh, the path, we go down Newtown Road, um, it'll go up Marvin Road and then connect, uh, oh, my drawing. Um, where it'll connect where the loop trail currently ends at the front of the preserve. And all of this would be, uh, the similar six to eight foot asphalt trail. So the, with the end goal that we would, um, in the future, you know, we finish the loop and go up Marvin Road eventually. But this, this is the, uh, this is the scope that I've identified, you know, as the best value for, um, for basically what CRTPO is looking for in an application. And it's the best value for what we can ask for right now.
Great. Any questions for Rohit?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I do. Real quick.
Yeah.
This application is due when?
Uh, Friday. I'm almost done with the application though.
As we look at the, the entire village and you, you know, in the blue loop right there, it kind of closes out the loop, what were the other considerations?
Um, I mean, this area somehow is the only, um, the only thing we could really ask CRTPO because again, they're looking for regionally impactful projects and the downtown district gets us most of our points. So again, we assume we're going to do the district for the purposes of this application. Say we don't do the district, then we just don't win the application.
It, it needs to be, it needs to have some sort of like significance as the area, yeah.
I got it. I just, as again, I want to be, I want to be fair and balanced to all neighborhoods around. When someone says, oh, I know why you went that way.
Right.
Whoa, 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 no, wait a second. It is because, I want to be able to have that answer along with you.
Yeah, right.
That's my only question.
No problem.
Anybody else? Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution as presented with a forty percent match.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Uh, next up, H., Open Topics. Joe, Wuma.
Um, go back, Andy, assuming you guys.
Hey, there you are.
Um, yeah, just real quick, I mean, there's a couple of things. Number one, upcoming meeting next week, and Andy, you and I can talk about it. I will not be able to attend that meeting.
Okay.
I'm out of town.
Aye.
You're not going to be there. It'd be great if we could have somebody from the.
Rohit, can you make that?
Um, when's it?
It's next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday.
I, I too will be out of town, otherwise I would do it.
All right, let me check my calendar. Um, I would like for another council member to be there if possible, but.
Well, there's a slim chance I could be back on Thursday, but it's slim. If, if.
Well, the problem with it, the problem is, is it's, you know, I mean, they're not really coming up with anything on the agenda that's that important. We may not have a vote there, but just being there would be a nice thing, whether it's you, Rohit, and.
Yeah, I can make it.
If we did the resolution, would be great. Um, let me get my schedule here, uh, just to confirm. Yeah, it's on the twenty-second, and from three-thirty to five-thirty is the meeting. So anyway, if any of you guys are available as a representative, and I don't know how they would do that, but it's technically a group of municipalities. We could go there from a representative standpoint and just not have a vote at that, not that there's anything on that meeting that, um, is big going on. I have not informed them yet that I can't make it, but I was planning on doing that. But just wanted to reach out to any of you if you're available, assuming Rohit, you wanted to go?
Yeah, I can make it. Um, but I, uh, did they not move it from three-thirty to four o'clock?
They did move it to four.
They did move it to four o'clock because one of the.
One of the, yeah, one of the councilmen.
Right. Yes.
They're all at four o'clock from now on.
My bad, I haven't entered, I haven't changed yet, so.
Well, that's good, Joe, because three-thirty works, so you're on time.
Three-thirty works?
So you're on time.
Yeah.
So.
Um, and then real quick, and I propose this to them because I asked, how do we get things on the agenda? Um, a nice way, instead of me just asking, is there anything from any of you that would like to be brought up on discussion for, that we would need help from? A perfect example would be to Jamie's point earlier, how we get this vote, the upcoming vote in November. Um, you know, it'd be nice to have someone there to represent us and speak on our behalf of making sure they get to the meeting, or at least the representative does that can vote. And then, um, you know, that kind of stuff. I had one, at one point proposed, um, doing something similar to, uh, you know, as we all know, we're competing. If you look at us, we have very little money, most municipalities are in state home, and there's developing going all around. But if we want to capture land, we don't really have the ability to do it on our own. But if we did a joint bond venture with other municipalities, and then you could actually go out and have, you know, uh, multiple municipalities vying for land that is not turned into homes, that turns into schools, but maybe parks, rec, um, fields, that kind of stuff. I think there's missed opportunities. There's probably unfortunately more land in the other areas than there is ours, but, you know, I know from a Marvin resident, when I was a resident, kids in Docker, and if they were part of WCWAA, half the time their fields were flooded out. So it was just a thought, and they said if I wanted to spearhead it, but before I did any of that, I wanted to get your thoughts, if there's anything you want us to bring back to Wuma, including, you know, asking for a vote, an upcoming vote, and/or something like, uh, me moving forward with, uh, trying to figure out how we get multiple municipalities to consider a bond option for, you know, buying land essentially for development of, uh, um, you know, parks, recs, that kind of stuff.
Um, I think, yes, we definitely want to bring up the vote for CRTPO to Wuma and, implore them to please come to the meeting and vote.
That's a great idea.
Um, so Rohit, I think you're going to be the one there that you're going to make that work. Um, that would be great. And then Joe, I think, yeah, if you want to explore that, I'm good with you exploring that. I've always liked that idea.
Anything else that you guys want us, I mean, usually Rohit, you would know what's coming or what's.
Not off the top of my head, but I definitely think the CRTPO vote for sure.
Well, keep that in mind, we meet once a month. Andy and I try and both make that as long as well as Rohit's. So if there's something that we should be talking to with the other communities, just reach out to us.
Okay, so one thing.
Oh, and Christina has something.
One thing I'll say real fast, I haven't said anything to you guys about this because we're still working on it, but as a part of our retreat discussions that were had in February, we talked about solid waste collection. And we are actually going to be presenting a statement at the Wuma meeting about a solid waste collection contract. Weddington is interested in going in with us to do this RFP with solid waste collection. And I've done some preliminary numbers and I think that we're at a point where we could cut our residents' solid waste collection bills in half and provide better service that's more economically friendly for our environment.
And so. And our roads.
And our roads. So I'll have more information about that at the work session, but I just wanted to let you know that it is coming as a topic of discussion at the Wuma meeting. We are involved in those discussions, we're actually driving those discussions. So if you hear anything, that's, that's all coming from us.
Awesome. That's exciting.
That's, that's huge.
Yeah, that's, that's exciting.
That's, that's, that's exactly stuff that we could be doing in groups like this.
That's a, that's one of those sales points for annexing in.
That's right.
It is.
Okay. All right, anything else on Wuma?
Nope.
Nope, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Oh, always, Mr. Mayor. Um, next up, agenda items. One, review of action items and ongoing action item list. Can I do the action, ongoing action item list first?
Go ahead, y'all didn't do it actually at the last meeting.
Oh, no. What's up with the tree planting list?
You live in Greenwater?
Yeah, no progress on that one, but.
Our, yeah, our urban foresters haven't.
He's, he's a little behind on his projects, but just keep it on the list and we'll continue without the U.
All right, dwellings ordinance revision?
Uh, that'll also be, um, along with the whole ordinance revision.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay.
Big project.
Voluntary annexation plan, we know where they're at, roundabout lighting, we know what's going on there, Village Center renderings, we're still on that?
Um, yeah, I'm still working on making an arrangement with the, the new artist that I found.
Okay. Uh, sign plan and H.O.A. cost sharing, we've done that? Okay, you can say, do completed on that one.
Okay, I'll take it off.
Uh, streetlights, follow up with the C.T. and Union Power and streetlights.
Yeah, we'll have some at the central meeting.
Okay, Rohit, you're still pursuing all the federal, federal grants?
Sure am.
Working on the draft list, uses for Village Center?
I'll have to go to that committee.
Yeah, 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 we'll have, we'll have the uses ready by the next, the age of plan committee.
Okay. Um, Christina, yeah, the contract, haven't we done that?
We have not. We actually have had a few issues with the contract and we just now got it figured out this week. And then Urban's been out of town, but we're in the very final stages.
Okay. Followed us, we're just kind of working on that, boom, 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 bam. Research civil penalty for using, okay, you're going to, working on that. Uh, okay, you can take that one off, responsive misinformation. I don't think we're going to do anything about that. Uh, village signs, those are just like directional signs?
These are signs that had, I guess.
The foot, it was the footer that were like something.
Yeah, we're, we're going to get that addressed when we do our current gutter stuff.
Okay. Roundabout lighting, is this the same thing as the roundabout lighting?
Yeah.
All right, take, take one of those off. Uh, Austin, you've already done the potential form notice. CRTPO grants, we're working on those. Okay, great. All right, now your action item list.
Okay, Christina will probably have to help me with some of these. I didn't catch that many, it's time for some reason. But, uh, Christina will provide an update on Wyndham Hall roads at the work session. I will remind you all about the ethics webinar at the November meeting and December meeting. We will revisit the, um, the form inventory at the work session as we wait for one last committee member to get their forms in. Jamie will prepare, Jamie originally will prepare the budget amendment for the scheduling software. Um, I will post the blurb about Halloween and contact H.O.A.'s. I will prepare a resolution on age requirements for the work session. Uh, I will respond to the email about establishing a youth advisory board. Rohit will attend the Wuma meeting. Christina, what else? I didn't, I, did you catch anything else?
Um, I'll get with NCDOT on the roundabout meeting, prepare the petition for Newtown Road, get an index on the subdivisions for the Wyndham Hall. Um, no left turn ordinance at the next meeting, hopefully. We're getting CRTPO roundabout update in November. AMT, cost of Newtown repairs. That's all.
You got anything else?
Okay. All right, very good. Uh, next up, council comments. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you get to go first.
Woo-hoo. All right, thank, you know, great meeting, guys. Um, just wanted to thank everyone for continuing hard work and all the things you guys put together for us, staff, and also thank you for that. Just a real quick thing for those trick-or-treaters, or those choose to open their homes, or those choose to trick-or-treat, just be responsible and on both sides, and practice, you know, social distancing, all that stuff. But, you know, I hate to see that Halloween go away without the, or go by without being, you know, enjoying it or something. And since this is our last meeting before, regular meeting before voting, I encourage all residents, please get out early, vote early if you can. And because I'm showing the lines, they're going to be crazy, crazy tall, so I encourage you guys to argue out to the vote. But other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm going to meet myself here. Uh, yeah, pretty good, just going to bring that up, Joe. So I, I second the motion and reiterated going out voting on the fifteenth. The, uh, you know, I want to just say once again to thank the staff, the village staff, great job they're doing. Uh, Austin, I'm especially proud of yourself, you are on it, in communications, you're, you're getting information out there. Um, and, uh, you know, it's, it just showed to, this has got to be the most heated this village has ever been, and, you know, to the citizens. And, uh, so thank you for that, Rohit, thank you for your involvement. You got a lot of clings that you're juggling. Um, and especially Stinky, you're always holding it down. So thank you for the great work you guys are doing there. Um, I want to give also, just a quick shout out to the Heritage District Strategic Committee. Uh, you know, it's just a lot of work, there's a lot of moving parts to this. And, um, I, I reiterated that with Rohit, gave me the chance to say words because he just felt like I was on there and there were a lot of people that did have questions. So, um, anyway, um, you know, I'm, I'm just very proud of the work that we're all doing. So thank you.
All right, thanks, Bob. Jamie?
Great job, staff. I mean, we, this is a big agenda, a big, you know, we, we're accomplishing, we don't stop. We were accomplishing, we continue to accomplish a lot. So great job to every, you know, everyone involved in it. Great job to all the planning boards and, not, but all of the advisory boards and boards that put a lot of time into meeting and for those who do show up. Um, but, but thanks to them and, um, without, as I always do, um, thanks to Tommy and Mason for what they do to keep us safe. And, and again, my, my thoughts always go out to them every day for what they do and, yeah, be safe.
Andy?
Well, basically, same thing everybody has said, you guys do an awesome job every day and I'm very appreciative of everything that everybody does as a team of this community. We've been accomplishing a lot of things and, uh, and I'm very happy to see all the full momentum and appreciate all the hard work that's going into it.
All right, good, thanks, Andy. Um, ditto, ditto, ditto. I agree with what everybody said. But I also want to thank council for all of your hard work and your dedication. I'm, I'm really proud to, to work with you all. I'm, I'm excited about where we're going, what we've accomplished and what we're going to accomplish. So, um, so thank you to council as well. That's it. So now I need a motion to recess in the closed session pursuant to NCGS 143318 dot 11, A36, to consult with an attorney employed or obtained by the public body in order to protect attorney-client privilege and to discuss personnel.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Joe and Bob will call you back. All right, bud, Joe and Bob will call you back.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to move out of closed session into open session.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes and now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
That's just called a non-legal.